Uh, check one to testing cats audio for broadcast.
My laptop won't turn on, so I'm just gonna pass. I can't hear what's being said.
Okay. And Councilor McCam?
Yes.
Motion passed six to one.
Okay. So next on our agenda, we have item number four, and this is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And there'll be a time limit of three minutes per speakers wishing to talk about items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone wishing to make a public comment on items not on the agenda here in the Nat U Hill? Or anyone attending via Zoom? If so, raise your hand online or just come forward for those of you that are in the room.
I don't see anything online.
Yeah, going once, twice. All right, we'll move on to department updates. Uh, do we have any departments for Monroe County that wish to make an update at this time? If so, invite you to raise your hand on Zoom or come forward to our podium.
Okay.
See, our auditor is coming.
Good evening, Council. I want to remind everyone, including the audience, um, that the, our taxes, our property taxes are due May 10th. That's very soon, obviously, given today's date. And if you have any questions or you want to check your deductions, you're welcome to call our office. That phone number is eight one two three four nine twenty five ten. Or you can call my cell phone, uh, eight one two three six zero twenty three thirty eight. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those and try to provide great customer service to all of our constituents and, uh, and property owners. And I also want to mention that Bree has just recently emailed you guys an update of the ARPA. Um, matter of fact, Bree, why don't you speak of it? It's part of the same update, but let's let her talk about it.
Good afternoon. Um, I literally just minutes ago emailed you an ARPA status update. It also includes, um, reversion amounts for projects that have been completed. There are only two of those. But I just thought it might be nice to kind of see where we are with everything, so we can all wrap our heads around it. So please feel free to review. I'm happy, um, to kind of go over it with you at the work session if you'd like, um, or feel free to email me questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other department heads wishing to do an update? All right, going once, twice. All right, we'll move on to item number six, and that is council liaison updates. Are there any counselors that wish to provide an update, uh, for their liaison?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
I'll just pass.
My laptop won't turn on, so I'm just gonna pass. I can't hear what's being said.
Okay. And Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one.
Okay. So next on our agenda, we have item number four, and this is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And there will be a time limit of three minutes per speakers wishing to talk about items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone wishing to make a public comment on items not on the agenda here in the Nat U Hill? Or anyone attending via Zoom? If so, raise your hand online or just come forward for those of you that are in the room.
I don't see anything online.
Yeah, going once, twice. All right, we'll move on to department updates. Uh, do we have any departments for Monroe County that wish to make an update at this time? If so, invite you to raise your hand on Zoom or come forward to our podium.
Okay.
See, our auditor is coming.
Good evening, Counsel. I want to remind, uh, everyone, including the, uh, audience, um, that the, our taxes, our property taxes are due May tenth. That's very soon, obviously, given today's date. And, uh, if you have any questions or you want to check your, um, deductions, you're welcome to call our office. That phone number is eight one two, three, four, nine, uh, twenty-five, ten, or you can call my cell phone, uh, eight one two, three, six, zero, twenty-three, thirty-eight. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those and try to provide great customer service to all of our constituents and, uh, and property owners. And, uh, I also want to mention that Bree has just recently emailed you guys an update of the ARPA. Um, matter of fact, Bree, why don't you speak of it? It's part of the same update, but let's let her talk about it.
Good afternoon. Um, I literally just minutes ago emailed you an ARPA status update. It also includes, um, reversion amounts for projects that have been completed. There are only two of those, but I just thought it might be nice to kind of see where we are with everything, so we can all wrap our heads around it. So please feel free to review. I'm happy, um, to kind of go over it with you at the work session if you'd like, um, or feel free to email me questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other department heads wishing to do an update? All right, going once, twice. All right, we'll move on to item number six, and that is council liaison updates. Are there any counselors that wish to provide an update, uh, for their liaison activity?
I wanted to brag on the airport, but since like my computer won't turn on, I can't give you the specifics. Uh, but they had a huge increase. Aha, somebody turned it on, maybe? I don't know. Anyway, uh, for graduation, uh, weekend, a lot of parents and family flying in, and our airport has to be prepared for all different types of planes that will be coming in and service those people and make sure they get in safely and back out safely. And so kudos to our airport and the staff there getting that done. I would give you the numbers, only I don't have.
Thank you, Counselor Hawke. I want to add, in addition to that, also thank our deputies and other responders who manage, uh, traffic control, including the one with us tonight. We're grateful to them, and I know the public doesn't often, uh, remember to say our pleas and thank yous, but this council says our pleas and thank yous. Other updates from counselors? All right, gonna move on to item number seven on the agenda. This is boards and commission appointments, and we have one this evening.
Counsel, I move to approve the appointment of Hattie Johnson to the Sophia Travis Grants Committee for a term of two years, which expires on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Yes, Counselor Munson.
I would like to recognize that Ms. Hattie Johnson is sitting in the audience tonight, and she's waved her hands, and this is just so you all can meet her because, uh, several of us did get to meet her during an interview, and we're so happy to have this proposal tonight.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from council? Yeah, Counselor Crossley.
I was just gonna say that it's a pleasure to have, um, Mrs. Johnson on the committee and looking forward to all the great work that we're gonna do with her, um, joining us, so.
Oh, Counselor Wiltz.
Hi, thanks. Um, I was one of the folks who got to meet with Ms. Johnson when she, um, came in to talk to us about the possibility of taking this position, and I just wanted to, um, echo everyone's, um, comments that she's, um, super well qualified and looking forward to having her work on this committee. And some of you might recognize her name because she was, um, in food services for Monroe County School Corporation for years and years, and I know I saw her name at the top of letterhead and, and emails coming out about, um, all kinds of things for the schools for a long time. Um, but I just wanted to say welcome and thanks for, uh, being willing to serve on the committee.
Thank you, Counselor Wiltz. Any other comments or questions from council? Right. So with this, um, I believe, do we do public comment on this? Yes, I'll open it up for any comments from the public. Seeing none, we will ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yeah.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, and thank you very much, Ms. Johnson, for your service. We look forward to it. We can, we appreciate the service you've already given this community, so more to come. That takes us now to item number eight from the courts, and I believe we've got Judge DeKoff and Lisa Abraham here.
Counsel, I move to approve the court's request for an additional court bailiff position and to simultaneously amend the salary ordinance and fund one zero 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 dash zero two two five general fund courts with a new account line, one four one two three court bailiff, thirty-five hours, Civ Pol A, non-exempt with a May twenty twenty-three hiring date.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second.
Good evening. Um, I'm Lisa Abraham, the Court Administrator. I am here with Judge DeKoff today. We are asking to change from two part-time bailiffs to a full-time bailiff. What I currently have is two part-times fill in one full-time, of course, with no benefits. One bailiff resigned back in October, and I have been unable to fill that spot. I have tried and tried and posted, but no resumes have come in for a part-time. I've just been informed that I have another bailiff. My other part-time one is gonna be resigning this summer. So I'm gonna be down basically one staff bailiff. Um, what I'm asking for is to be the two, or I'm sorry, one completely full-time with benefits, thinking I can obviously post and hopefully fill that one a lot easier. We have currently seven bailiffs, and just to let you know what they do, one bailiff stays at our front door to help with security for entering the building. One has to be down in Commissioner Raper's courtroom because he's in a totally different building, so he houses that one. So that takes two of my five bailiffs out of the picture for using them. The other five will actually go and have to go from room to room in our court, in our courtrooms in Justice Building for the other offices, which are nine other courtrooms for only five bailiffs. Some courtrooms do require additional security, and I'm gonna let Judge DeKoff explain why they would ask for more. So sometimes two are in one courtroom, which makes me even less to have more security in the building.
If we have a hearing that's highly contentious, or there's a possibility that it's gonna get contentious, that we're gonna have more than one bailiff in there, um, for security reasons. There was a hearing on Friday, uh, with a special judge. It had to do with a, um, particularly, um, dangerous, um, defendant who was brought by the Department of Corrections, so there were two bailiffs in there at the time and a couple of, um, jail, jail staff, but because the jail staff has their own duties to do with the sheriff, and we, our bailiffs are responsible for the courtrooms, um, and the security of, of us in the courtrooms, it's just necessary. And as Lisa said, sometimes we have multiple courts and multiple hearings going on, and we're sharing them with, um, five bailiffs, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I'll also say too, in our criminal caseload, that if a person is remanded in the courtroom, a bailiff does have to take them to the court or to the jail, which means that bailiff now has left that courtroom. And we do even remand people in the, uh, current building next door in Commissioner Rapers, and since they have to actually cross the alleyway, it takes two bailiffs if they serve that or in the probation department. So that's why we're asking, hopefully, full-time will make it a little bit better for us than, since I'm gonna be down a whole one. We did mention that we just had one of our full-time bailiffs just had an accident over the weekend. So he is gonna be out of commission for, we don't know for how long. So we're already short that one, plus the seventh, so we're really looking at two bailiffs, definitely one for quite a while till he's healed and can come back to work.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm gonna go do the traditional questions on the left, questions on the right, so I'll start. Questions, any questions from my left? Counselor Iverson.
I just wanted to mention that this item did come before PAC, and it was unanimously, um, recommended that it come to council as quickly as possible due to the security concerns.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKim.
I just wanted to thank Michelle for the, um, the fiscal impact statements. I think those were, that's exactly what we, what we like to see very clearly laid out. Definitely, um, you know, we'll, we'll see those from now on, but that's exactly what we need. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the fiscal impact, I mean, my understanding is that for this year, your, your intention is to absorb that out of existing appropriations.
Well, I did, what I can do is, like I said, I can reduce my hourly and shift it over because the fact that I won't be paying my bailiff out of the hourly, which in that regard, then I would do the same thing next year when we do our two thousand and twenty-four budgets.
Yeah.
But I couldn't absorb all of it. Sorry.
Counselor Crossley.
I just had a question, just out of curiosity. Um, I know you, have you had any full, do you have any full-time applicants to pull from?
I know you mentioned that you keep getting, like, nobody's doing anything for part-time, but.
Right, I've never had, I couldn't post for a full-time, so I didn't have a full time. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from Counsel, Counselor Hawke?
It just seems to me, and I might not be remembering this correctly, but at one time, uh, we had some bailiffs who wanted only to work part-time, so this worked out really well for them. Worked out really good for the county because then we didn't have to pay all the benefits and so forth. But at such time as those folks change over and decide they no longer want to work the part-time, then you want, then you're stuck with trying to figure out what you're gonna do with it. And we've done that in other departments as well. Then we have to switch and go to full-time, and it's just going to cost more money, but during those years, well, we were able to save some. I mean, and we had qualified people doing it. That just made a lot of sense. You might be remembering that correctly.
Yes, um, I know it's been, I've been in this spot for two thousand and eighteen, so prior to that, we had two bailiffs that wanted to retire because they could then draw the county pension, and, but they still wanted to work part-time, so they asked about if we could use them, and we were desperate that time, and the budget was very slim. We couldn't hire another full-time, so it was wonderful that two people shared one job, so we were able to keep them, but unfortunately, now it's not so lucky. Nobody wants to, most of our full-time positions that we post for them come from either retired, say, BPD or Monroe County Jail or the Sheriff's Department, you know, if they want to retire, so we're hoping maybe we can jump on someone who is willing to come back and do that, because they can still draw their pension from either BPD or the Sheriff's Department and come back, so. That's what we're hoping for. That's what most of our bailiffs are right now, is from one of those two departments, so they're very qualified.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll throw this out to the public for any public comment, either here in the room or on Zoom. Zoom, you can raise your hand on, uh, here in the room, just come forward to the podium. All right, seeing none, we will ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it very much. It takes us to item number nine. It's a request from the surveyor's office. I saw our surveyor here, Tron Randolph. Counselor Iverson.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Deckard. Counsel, I move to approve the court's request for a new position, GIS technician, and to simultaneously amend the salary ordinance and fund one zero 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 dash zero 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 six general fund surveyor with a new account in line one two zero one zero, GIS technician, forty hours, PAT A, non-exempt with a July twenty twenty-three hiring date.
Second.
Very much. All right.
Oh, thank you so much. I'm, uh, glad to be here. Um, quickly, we, we have, uh, A and B type requests. We put together a presentation that kind of covers both of them, and then we can bifurcate that, and then entertain each one at, uh, at the appropriate time. I did think that we had the effective date of July first, two thousand and twenty-three. Is that what you said, Mr. Deckard?
We had discussed that during the PAC meeting, that you were, uh, thinking July, so I just put like an estimated July-ish. So if I'm, that's my fault then, if you weren't looking for that date.
The, the goal was, uh, July first. Um, would we need to revise that motion?
I didn't set a particular date because I didn't know if you would have a person in place by July first. That's why I said July twenty twenty-three.
Right. Um, as read, I think that incorporates the first of July. I think it's fine the way it was read. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Sorry about the details, somewhat detail-oriented over here, but I wrote a statement, and, um, it's pretty much what you heard at PAC, so forgive me, uh, for everyone that, uh, serves on the PAC. Hello and good, uh, evening. I'm extremely excited to be here today to discuss the creation of the GIS technician position and the reclassification of the GIS coordinator. I've been with the county for over eighteen years, and when I first started, GIS wasn't a household name. Over the years, I've assisted many offices and department with integrating GIS or map making to meet their project goals or operational needs. The GIS coordinator was restructured in the surveyor's office in two thousand and nineteen, not that long ago. The first goal was to deploy the enterprise, which is basically the foundation of our GIS. Then we deployed the portal, and then finally, we have this GIS online atmosphere, um, which I think is becoming more readily used and understood. GIS is now broadly used across county offices and departments, and the expectations of the public, I'm gonna repeat that. The expectation of the public is ever-growing. But the GIS division has remained a team of one. We need to empower our county by providing the proper personnel and geospatial tools, so we don't fall behind. And creating this GIS technician position and reclassifying the GIS coordinator is the first step. We went to PAC, and we got a three to zero vote unanimously to move this forward. Also, our office has put together some slides, which I would like Dr. John Batton, our GIS coordinator, to cover for you.
There we go. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Sorry about that. Uh, hi, everybody. Uh, thanks for having me here. I'm, uh, John Batton. I'm the GIS coordinator for Monroe County. Um, I want to say I love my job. Uh, it's, it's a pleasure working with, uh, my neighbors as a Monroe County government employee and working for my neighbors as a civil servant. Um, I started this position in August of this past year, August of two thousand and twenty-two. Um, and what I noticed was that we have a robust GIS at Monroe County already. Um, but what I've also noticed is that this GIS is expanding rapidly, and it's also maturing. And what I mean by it's that it's expanding rapidly is that we have new departments coming on board, trying to integrate GIS into their workflows, as well as existing departments having new employees come on board who need to utilize GIS. We also have a maturation going on in terms of how GIS is actually approached. No longer is it isolated to just desktop environments. Now we have, as Tron said, this online environment where lots of people are really starting to engage with it. Um, what this means with this expansion of use and this maturation of GIS is that we have an increased demand, right, for spatial data, an increased demand for maps and things of that nature, right? This is all right now falling on my shoulders, and a lot of these are kind of rote activities that could be accomplished quite easily with the help of an, of a, an additional technician. In terms of the maturation, we're also seeing this new online interface that's really allowing us to deploy massive amounts of new kinds of public engagement, opportunities, data dashboards, as well as ways to present county data in a more transparent way to the public, right? This again is not just, uh, the initial deployment of these, but it's the constant upkeep, making sure that these dashboards are accurate and, and, uh, kept up to date. Now, Tron mentioned that there's an expectation from county users for data accuracy, data quality, and for a reliable GIS, right? I did mention we have a robust GIS already, but our GIS data in the county does have some room for improvement, right? There needs some TLC with what we have going on. So one of the things that this technician would provide is this additional technical support, right, of data quality assurance, data cleanup, um, and data accuracy, right? As well as making sure that these kind of online environments are again up to date, accurate, and functioning properly, right? So we're not having broken links. One of the biggest calls I get constantly on a day-to-day basis is from people using our Elevate site and saying, hey, um, this is not, you know, the data here is maybe not exactly what it's supposed to be doing, and so having this actual additional technical support would be very helpful. Um, additionally, uh, if this technician would also provide us with continuity and the ability to, to preserve and retain some institutional knowledge of the GIS division. Currently, if Tron or myself would leave, um, the GIS division and GIS across the county would be kind of put in jeopardy, right? We do not have other folks who understand how GIS is deployed across the county. Tron has been working kind of part-time as an elected official, well, he's been working full-time as an elected official, part-time as a GIS technician for since, for, for a very, very long time, right? Um, and so this is just kind of showing that this, this position has been needed for a while. Additionally, um, I, I, in terms of all the technology that's been deployed across, across the county, um, I am the only one currently who's responsible for any type of GIS technical support, right? T S D does manage our servers, but any type of software updates, which we're gonna be experiencing a lot more of if we expand our licensing, and database management is on the hands of the GIS coordinator. Um, we are experiencing, or we are right now in the process of exploring, expanding our licenses across Monroe County. And so we had Esri, who's kind of the, the company that provides our GIS, come and develop a roadmap. And one of the things that they said was that for this GIS to continue to be successful and for GIS to continue to be impactful across Monroe County, it's imperative that this team is expanded by one or more people. Um, and this is to allow for the, the coordinator, they say, to, um, help kind of focus on core enterprise development and develop strategies where GIS can be leveraged across all departments. Now, I think it's imperative to say, um, if, since I'm, we're, we're requesting a new position here, to see how Monroe County compares to some other units of comparable size. And so I brought up the city of Bloomington, uh, which currently has five full-time GIS staff, as well as Hamilton County, and Hamilton County is brought up here because WIS compares Hamilton County equally or comparably to Monroe County. And you can see that Hamilton County currently has thirteen full-time GIS employees. If we could go to the next slide. As we are coming. As we were coming up with this uh, this notion of creating a GIS technician position, I solicited. Um, support from different departments and offices across Monroe County. I mentioned earlier that I love my position because I work with different, I work with my neighbors and I work for my neighbors. I also love my position because I work across departments and I'm building relationships across departments as a GIS coordinator, but GIS as a technology does the same thing. I can't think of another technology in Monroe County government that does such a great job of kind of articulating different departments together and making these these workflows. Um, apparent and how they relate to one another. So again, this is all the departments that have support. And finally, last slide for me. I just wanted to highlight some of the ongoing. If we can go to the the next slide. Or screen. There we go. Um, just some of the ongoing projects. I did mention that this GIS is expanding. All of the boxes in green are new departments that have just come on. To integrating GIS and their workflows since I started. Um, and so you can see we have this massive amount of existing and exciting and uh. Transparent workflows with the GIS and in uh integrating another technician into this process. Will be uh to the benefit of all of Monroe County and to make sure that these things continue to thrive and and go on. Um, and with that, I'm going to pass it back to Tron, who's going to talk about reclassifying the GIS coordinator position as an SO anchored at the EXA level. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could just move to the next slide. First and foremost, I want to. Have a special thank you to Ms. Kim Shell. Uh, she's always supported the Monroe County Surveyor's Office and their ongoing efforts and. Uh, she provide us with these comparable counties to compare to. So what we did is we just basically tried to pull up all of the. Uh, job titles that had GIS or geospatial uh. In it and then kind of put the salaries there. Uh, two points. One, the most. Recent data we found is twenty twenty one. And we weren't able to identify if they're thirty five hour work week or forty hour work weeks. Our GIS coordinator is a forty hour work week. And as you can see, the average of all of them is around sixty nine thousand, six hundred and eighty six. But when we remove the ones that had technician in the position. It goes way more in line with what our request is around seventy two thousand, three hundred and forty four was what the average was when we removed the technician positions from. That um breakdown. And if you'd like to go to the next slide. Oh, well, first, I guess, um. No, that's on the next slide. So if you'd like to move on the next slide. Thank you. Um, so our. Goal, my request today is to reclassify the GIS coordinator back to an SO that was classified for an SO for over a decade. Um, and then tie it into the EXA uh grid at the midpoint and um. This was approved by PAC with a positive recommendation. And um, the goal here is since we'll tie it into the midpoint. Um, if we reach that eight year bump, I'll come back to council and actually ask for the increase. So I'm going to follow this grid structure. But this is really the only solution I could see that works with um, one uh, making sure that we um. Have a a good decent salary uh that's comparable um and a way where they have some predictability, both for their position and for the council. That's our last slide. You could just take the slides down. Um. We have uh talked uh. About uh the financial impact. Um, the GIS coordinator comes out cute and cap and they're comfortable with that. And then also. Uh, I'm able to um transfer in house to support the GIS technician uh for the remainder of twenty twenty three. There will be a a increase in the twenty twenty four budget, but um outside of that, I'm looking uh to gain your support and approve this today. So we can kind of get out there, start advertising like it was noted. We were thinking July, but it takes some time to bring uh personnel in and um. I think this is in line uh with our goals and I open it up to you for uh questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Tron, Mr. Inright Randall. I'll open it up to questions from the council. Counselor Munson.
First, I have a comment before a question, and that is um. I want to call the public's attention and my fellow counselor's attention to a very wonderful uh program presented at the Monroe County History Center. Lastly, uh, week before last.
Yeah.
Uh, by Dr. John Baton, uh, using uh historical maps, GIS and census data, historical census data. To tell us about the history and growth of our community. And it's available to you uh. From the history clubs uh Facebook page and with links to uh to the YouTube version. And I think you'll you'll enjoy it if you get a chance to look at it. So now to the question. I did not get to see the salary data. That's being requested for this um. Until the presentation tonight. And did I miss something somewhere?
Are you talking the fiscal impact?
I was talking about the table that Mr. Tron and right.
Yeah, so as we moved forward, we wanted to kind of do a dual effort with reclassifying uh the GIS coordinator um where they will. Well, actually, currently, uh, the growth of the GIS they're overseeing, but also if we create the GIS technician, they'll have that supervisory role. So through the PAC process, they asked us to kind of uh look at surrounding counties and compile kind of a a salary breakdown and um. My first goal was actually to try to uh reclassify it as a EXE, but PAC. Or not PAC, WIS kind of uh didn't uh necessarily um. Support my recommendation, but with the highly technical aspect of the role, I think it's in line with putting it in back into an SO. And then, you know, obviously compensating him for kind of the. Job they're doing today, but also the growth that we're going to see occur tomorrow.
Okay. So I was just asking about uh the data that you presented on a slide, the comparative salary.
So that was um.
That was, wasn't, I didn't receive that until like just a little bit before the meeting. So, yeah, so no, you have not seen that information.
And I think it's just because we just left PAC, what date was that a handful of weeks ago? And I think we have one week to compile all this. So basically, we did our due diligence of getting all the information that was asked uh. By PAC.
But we are being asked tonight to uh approve a specific salary. Is that, isn't that correct?
Yes, uh, the the salary recommendation for the GIS coordinator that was from WIS, um, that's in line. And then. Um, the salary request to be tied into the EXE midpoint, EXA midpoint. So yes, those are our uh. Requests.
Okay.
In the breakdown, yes, sorry about the short notice, but we did our best just to turn that information around and present it today.
Okay. I'll pass for now.
Could I ask, are you, are you commenting on the like the five counties data? That I showed or?
Uh, and it's a normal part of part of our budgeting process. We look at. All kinds of salad data and uh. And have have a chance to. Review it and reflect on it and and come to some conclusion because that's our responsibility as. The fiscal agents for the county.
Right. And uh, what we're doing with the technician position is. Working off of the recommendations of uh WIS and what we're doing with the reclassification of the GIS coordinator is requesting to tie it into the EXE midpoint. Uh, EXE one A midpoint, so.
Counselor.
Yeah, I I wanted to mention, uh, we did uh take the job descriptions uh through the PAC process. And send it off to to Wagner Irwin and Shealy. And for the, you're absolutely right that the technician came back. As a PAT A, they factored in two hundred and ninety five PAT factor points and they recommended it be classified as PAT A. So. That's well within within bounds. And then in in PAC, uh, we did have a lengthy discussion on. On the WIS recommendation, uh, where they recommended a PAT D uh as opposed to the SO that's being talked about tonight. And and so if folks want to catch up. We had that a really robust conversation. Um, and before I ask my question, I wanted to kick it over to Michelle because. I want to make sure that my memory is serving me correct on all those details.
Yes, that is correct. Um, when we sent it off, the GIS technician, they asked for a PAT level. Um, it did come back as we anticipated as a PAT A with regards to the GIS coordinator. Um, it is. Currently classified as a PAT D. They were asking for an EXE and PAT um WIS did bring it back. With no change to the classification as a PAT D. So um, what I sent you was a um. Fiscal impact report to reflect the um. The PAT D and the EXE uh A level that he is requesting, so.
Excellent. Okay, I may ask a quick question.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, I I think the use cases for GIS are really attractive and I think you're spot on. I think the public really likes to see these sorts of things. So. My question is, where can we go to find the maps and the really interactive dashboards that you created? I'm going to pass that to John. We are actually working with deploying a new uh interface for the county. Yeah, all the data right now is in in two places. We have our, it's called our ArcGIS online environment, which is kind of a. It's it's an earlier kind of interface. And then we have what Sean mentioned later, the enterprise, and that's one that we actually host internally. Um, our data right now is is searchable on the enterprise, but it's kind of hard to find. And so what I was working on actually yesterday and today is actually creating a. Uh, a new website for the Monroe County GIS Division that's up to date and has all of these apps included on it. So we have a. Kind of like a new and newsworthy apps, uh, which will be showcasing things like the uh, the twenty twenty four solar uh eclipse route that's going to be going through Monroe County. Uh, which is pretty cool, um, as well as a number of dashboards that I've been working on for uh for council, but also for uh various different departments. Um, I've also done a bunch of imagery that a lot of people are in, you know, excited about. So that's kind of part of the process is making sure that this is accessible, right? And and in a way that's easy to go.
Yeah, because for those of us who need our kids to show us how to work the TV remote, it's it's going to be important to have a nice central spot for a.
Yep. Yeah, and this would just be Monroe County uh GIS Division would be the way to find it.
Okay, move over to my right, Counselor McKim.
Yeah, thank you. Um, first of all, I I kind of make it clear, I strongly support both of these uh requests. I think that. The the need for the additional staffing uh in the GIS division is is manifest. It's it's clear that that. Given the demands that we see from the public and from within the county for all kinds of GIS services that um. Really, one person can't can't do it all. So I think adding the coordinator certainly makes a lot of sense. It's funny that you, you know, you mentioned Hamilton County because that's actually the the one that I pulled the data from. And used as an example as well. I could only find twelve with the title, so maybe there is a an issue with, but but that's still quite a bit more than uh than our one in Monroe County. I also noticed that the um GIS director uh salary in twenty twenty two was a hundred and four thousand. Um, so I I don't think that the uh the time to the EXA A is uh very much of a stretch at all. I think it's incredibly. It is difficult for counties in general to attract and retain uh highly qualified technical positions. And and the WIS system doesn't really. Deal with that well. That's that's one of the problems with the WIS system is that it tends to, it works well with the vast majority of. Of local government employees, but we were talking about people with with particular. Particularly in demand technical skills, it doesn't really work very well. Um, I do agree with their decision that it's the the EXE position is not, or the EXE classification is not. Uh, the, I mean, it's it's not an executive position. It is a highly skilled technical uh position. And so in that, in that regard, I think SO is right. And in the past, we've had issues with SOs where we just basically name a salary and. That salary just stays stays there until it stays that way with no career path until. Uh, the department head comes and tries to make an argument. So I think tying it to a particular uh classification within EXE. While acknowledging that it is not an EXE is is entirely, we've certainly done that with many other. Uh, positions as well. And I think given the the data from uh from other counties uh that both that you've presented and that you we can pull up from Gateway. On our own, I, you know, this is well within. I mean, even even probably a little low compared to probably where where we should be to to retain, but I don't I don't necessarily want to bid against ourselves. So that's just my way of saying I I support both of these requests.
Thank you very much, Counselor McKim. Other questions or comments from council?
Um, yes, uh, at the PAC meeting, I made it clear that I would rely heavily on. Uh, Jeff McKim's expertise regarding these matters because um. I know that he's out there. He knows uh what is going on in the world, having to do with GIS and all of the kind of support we have to have. I I do want to say that it's rather unfair to expect council member Munson or others. To just jump on board, not having had all the information needed for the decision. So if you wish to postpone this. Decision until our next meeting, I will support that because I think it's only fair. When when the PAC said, look, we're not going to decide, we are going to send that. To the council as a whole to decide, you needed all that information to make that decision. And so uh, I would understand if you said you're not ready to make it.
Just to be clear, that would only apply to the second item, right? The the GIS um.
I just responding.
Coordinator.
Coordinator.
Coordinator, yeah.
Because the the technician was already, I mean, that that's just a standard with salary.
Right. And and do you feel like you have all the information you need to make this particular decision? So. I fully support uh both positions. And my only question was uh the salary for the uh GIS coordinator because I did not have the information to review. In time to make what I thought was a responsible decision. So.
And I I don't want to. But, you know, uh, add any more weight or try to fast track anything. I was just.
If my, if my colleagues. Feel very comfortable, I'm perfectly happy to uh. To hear from them on this.
Our goal was actually to kind of come back at a later date, but me and uh Mr. Baton have planned vacation, so it pushes us like two months out. And so. Sorry if uh the information was uh presented real quickly, but um that just worked best with our schedules. So.
I I I've seen a couple of different hands. I'm gonna go to Counselor Wiltz and then the auditor, Counselor Wiltz.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I have a question about the use of Hamilton County. As the comparison county. I saw, I know you did some other counties on that last list that you had up. Yeah, but it seemed like it was an emphasis on Hamilton County as a comparison. And. Um, I know when we looked at salaries for elected officials. That county seemed to be quite the outlier with respect to its salaries. So. Um, I don't know who can maybe provide more information on why that county is being emphasized here.
Well, um, we were asked to kind of have comparable counties. I'm going to defer to Kim, but I I just wanted to make a quick note that uh we. Did bring a different salary comparison where it actually kind of showed the private sector, which the average pay was close to a hundred thousand and uh nationally. But in Bloomington, it was close to eighty thousand. But then they uh request us to look at counties and I'll let uh Michelle address that.
I reached out to WIS with regards to comparable counties, with regards to GIS coordinators, directors, that kind of information. Um, and I received uh five, six counties um with regards to that. And one of them was Hamilton. So um. And I think you have the, they're all listed on on your chart, but I couldn't, I can't remember off the top of my head what counties they were. So, but. WIS felt like these were comparable to our to Monroe County and that's that Hamilton was one of them. Even though the elected official salaries may be different, the GIS. Um, they thought was comparable. So that's why we went with that.
Hmm.
Okay, auditor Smith.
Um, yes, uh, first of all, I want to point out that that this um item number nine has an A and B. And usually we do one each one and then we move to the next one. So I'm only going to address A. Uh, but I do want to mention uh that um as the auditor, of course, I'm the statutory keeper of the parcel information for taxation, which is a huge. Use of uh the uh the digital data. Uh, but our issue is that the um, that the complete digital data is so heavy laden with so many attributes. That the content creator or content creation person um would not have the availability to be the technician as well. And this model, although they pieced it. would not have the availability to be the technician as well. And this model, although they pieced it together and they've tried to make it work, I've been doing this for twenty years and they've done a great job, but I don't see how they possibly could have done it. Um, some of you may know or may not know that I actually had Tron as an engineering student twenty-five years ago. Uh, but I, I just want you to know that as we model mapping data, when we drill down, we need to be assured that that data is right. Every datum point is dead on, every Cartesian coordinate is, is just those coordination or coordination points are dead on. They're, they actually map like datum straight up and down. If that doesn't happen, we're wasting our data and our time and our energy, and we're having to go back and fix things, which again puts our, um, puts our, uh, local income tax at, um, at, at risk at the state level because of these datum points not being correct. So I only want to cover A, but I want to say that, that I have been, been involved with this, with our G I S since before Thirty-Nine Degrees North was a company. Matter of fact, we even helped them get going. And so at this point, the fact that we're still so little is almost just asinine. So when it comes to item A, I ask you, I respectfully ask you as the auditor and the keeper of the majority of your taxation parcel information to please okay this because we absolutely need this position as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you, auditor. Counselor McKip.
Thank you. And I kind of wanted to address, uh, Counselor Wiltz's concern about using Hamilton, uh, County as a comparison. And I, I think, um, I mean, given what we've seen here from Hamilton County, we're not really using them as a comparison. If, if we were, we would be saying, you know, we, we would be suggesting that the G I S coordinator salary is thirty thousand dollars more than what is being proposed here, uh, and that we'd be adding several more G I S technician positions. So I think we're just using it as, as a benchmark, but I don't, we're, we're not in any way even trying to come close to, uh, what, uh, the, uh, what Hamilton County would be paying or, or the, their level of staffing. I will say that, yes, uh, as, uh, as Ms. Smith mentioned, we, uh, item A is on the, excuse me, is on the floor right now. Uh, and so my suggestion is we go ahead and vote on that. And then I would certainly, I would, for item B, which is the salary, uh, increase of the G I S coordinate, I would be willing to, I'm, I'm willing to support it now, but I'm also just as willing to table it if my colleagues would like to have some chance to review some of that other information. So why don't we, why don't we vote on A and then read B on the, uh, under the floor and proceed?
Any further discussion on A? All right, we will follow Counselor McKim's suggestion here, and I'll call for a roll call vote on A. Public, pardon me, public comment on A. Anyone from the public that wishes to comment, you can come forward in the night you'd hail room to our podium or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote on A.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, everyone. And so let's go to B now, Counselor Iverson.
Counsel, I move to approve the surveyor's request to change the classification of the G I S coordinator from a PAT D to a special occupation or S O, having the salary compensation tied to the E X E A three-year level and to simultaneously amend the salary ordinance and fund one-one-three-eight-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero cumulative capital development account line one-zero-zero-two-three, G I S coordinator, forty hours, special occupation, non-exempt with an effective date of May the eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion, Counselor Munson.
I believe we've already had a discussion about this, so I will just offer, um, an amendment to table this, uh, item of business, the amended job description and, uh, the, uh, amended salary ordinance until our following meeting at the work session. And that should be enough time for all of us to have, uh, additional information.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to table of a second.
Second.
There's a second from Counselor Wiltz. And I had never remembered this. I've heard it a million times. Is there, can there be discussion on a tabling?
We're going to discuss that.
Okay. So any discussion on tabling this B?
Mr. Surveyor. I mentioned it, but I guess I just wanted to echo it one more time. This is reflected of the job they're doing today. Um, and I, I, I don't think it's, um, I get, uh, getting information kind of all at once, but I think it follows the structure that the council has. It, it reflects, um, to, uh, positions that were created, that were tied into other positions. Um, basically, uh, council has a process and I follow it to the letter. And, um, to push this down the road, uh, I don't think is ideal because we are already meeting the demand of the growth that has occurred and they're doing that work today. And, um, I, I just argue against the need to table it in that one facet, because we probably won't be able to make it back here for a work session and then a regular session for at least two months. And that's unfortunate, um, to delay it just due to, you know, the, 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 the plan time we already have, um, scheduled. And, you know, uh, Mr. Baton has, you know, been here long enough to have, um, vacation time. And, you know, I encourage my staff to use that time.
Sure, Mr. Surveyor, uh, if I could, I think, I would just hover the comment. I think this is an effort to get you where you might need to be and do our technical details that we have to do on our end, much like the technical details you're describing. I think you're heading in that direction. I think that's kind of the sentiment I'm picking up here. So I, I, we can figure out logistics on time and, and that, but this is sort of the thing that I'm hearing from counselors. They, they, they want to figure out other comments, Counselor McKip.
And I guess I'm just going to say that, I mean, you don't need to be here to give another presentation. Just pro- provide the data that you've already provided to the council and, uh, have any counselors who have questions or concerns to, to raise them with you before the next, oh, before the meeting.
Yeah.
I think that's a perfectly reasonable thing to allow the counselors to have the opportunity to review the data presented.
Yeah.
Other comments from Council, Counselor Hawk?
Uh, yes, I think we'd already, uh, I certainly had already said that I would support, uh, counselor's suggestion that we postpone this while we have time to review it. And, uh, most department heads would be delighted to hear that we intend to review it and come back for your, uh, decision. So be happy about it.
I am extremely delighted. I, I, I'm just very transparent and you asked my opinion and gonna give you mine.
There's been a call for the vote and we need to do public comment on this.
No, we do not.
We do not on a table?
Nope, not honestly.
We're all learning. So with that, we will do a roll call vote on this tabling motion.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous, um, to be tabled to the May twenty-third meeting.
Thank you so much, and I really am ecstatic. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Surveyor. We will now move to item number ten, Board of Commissioners. I've, uh, an item from the Board of Commissioners.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request to create new account lines for additional appropriations and fund four-nine-one-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero, Energy Conservation Fund in the amount of two thousand dollars in the Supplies category and eight thousand dollars in the Services category for a total of ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Looks like we've got Angie Purdy with us today. Welcome, Ms. Purdy.
Thank you. Nice to see you guys. Um, I'm here, uh, with a rather exciting, I think, um, uh, opportunity for our community, and that is, uh, Mr. Iverson and, uh, Commissioner Jones, I think is also, um, attending, um, so I don't know if T S C could make her a panelist maybe. But, um, these two have initiated an agreement with the Environmental Resilience Institute and have agreed upon the placement of an I U Spea McKinney Fellow, um, for the summer and possibly into the fall. And as such, the Board of Commissioners are requesting, um, this funding to pay for that sponsorship for this fellow. And my understanding is the start date is May twenty-ninth, the end of this.
That's right.
Okay.
Right, thank you, Ms. Purdy. We will open it up to comments and or questions up here from council. Starting to the left, I see Counselor Iverson.
Yes, sorry. Well, I, I'm clearly excited about this and the partnership that Monroe County is having with Indiana University's and Environmental Resilience Institute. Uh, I think a lot of times, uh, those of us who are politicians run on saying that we're going to work on environmental crisis issues. And I'm very happy that here we are, uh, appropriating dollars to do just that. Uh, the commissioners unanimously approved this item at their Wednesday meeting. Um, and at that meeting, uh, individuals from the Indiana University Environmental Resilience Institute, uh, noted that Monroe County is the first, if not one of the first counties to go through this particular program to make sure that, uh, we are fighting climate crisis and making sure that our community is much more resilient. This program is going to have two deliverables that you'll see in the future. This summer, we'll be working with the McKinney Climate Fellow, uh, Hader Attique, who is joining us, uh, via Zoom. Um, and, uh, we'll be working on data collection this summer. And that data collection then in the fall will be turned into a climate resilience plan. Uh, we are also very, uh, thrilled that we are using the Energy Conservation Fund for this purpose. This is a fund that is, uh, is absolutely, um, a, a wonderful thing that we have in Monroe County. And those who set it up in the past and have the, the foresight to do so, um, we're, we're just quite, uh, wonderful to do. We, you know, when we work with our city colleagues, uh, a lot of times they'll mention that we have this, this, uh, and, uh, conservation fund, uh, with a little bit of jealousy because the fund has been allowed to grow and here we are using those funds to appropriate. So I don't know if, um, I, I'll end my comments there, but just really, um, thrilled for this and I'm looking forward to voting in favor.
See, and I see that we've got Commissioner Jones here as well. I'll invite her to speak in just a moment, uh. Commissioner Jones, you want to say some words on this? You are muted right now.
Sorry about that. Um, the commissioners are very much in support of this. This is something that we've actually been looking at for a long time and is a particularly good use of this fund, I think. So I'm just excited that we have someone to help us working on it and that we're going to be moving forward with it, with your agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we'll go to other comments. I'll start with Counselor McKip.
Uh, first of all, I'm extremely excited about this project, uh, as well. Thank you to Counselor Iverson and Commissioner Jones for taking the lead on this. Uh, I strongly support it. I, I do, uh, how, how much is left in the, or how much is in the Energy Conservation Fund at this point?
I want to say forty-eight, but I don't know where I'm coming.
I want to say that's about correct. It's, it's around forty-eight, forty-nine thousand.
And at this point, what goes into that? Is it mainly rebates from?
I'm not sure how many rebates we're still getting, but yeah.
Okay, it'll be interesting to just to see a report. I mean, it's not central to my vote here, uh, but it'll be interesting to see a kind of a history of, of that fund and what's still going into it, but. But, uh, but yeah, I'm, uh, definitely in support of this. It's great.
Okay, shall I be the bad guy down here?
Well, I've got Counselor Crossley next, then I will go to you, Counselor Hawk.
Well, let, let me just say that many of us were very concerned about, you know, dollars coming back in that could go into County General. And instead of doing that, it was like someone over here got to have special use of it. What if we did that with all of the different revenue funds that come in, that come in and set in County General and miscellaneous? And many, many times there were people coming back saying they wanted to use some of this. And as I recall, some of the members of the commissioners indicated they did not want to do that. They wanted to pull back into County General. I don't support this. What I would support is that we support, uh, interns coming in to the different departments. The county council had an intern at one time. It was very helpful. But to say that we have all this special money setting aside, that should, that should be closed out. And all of those dollars come back into County General is everything else. Folks, you keep acting like we've got more money than we got since. At one point in time, we're going to have to figure out. You know, you want all these other things. You can't just keep taking away from those, the ability to provide the other things, those big important things that we have to do. So, but I get, I, I get to be the person who says I don't like it.
Counselor Crossley.
Okay, um, so just out of curiosity, I see that it says like for summer and possibly fall. If it does go into fall, would you have to come back for an additional appropriation for?
Uh, we would, yes.
Okay. Do you think that you would probably come back?
That is a conversation that we need to have, um, probably once Mr. Attique starts.
Gotcha.
Um, so that, uh, we know kind of the, the flow of the work and the workload and what all can be done. And then obviously in the fall, what complicates that in addition is the classes resume.
Got it.
So the, the fall, it's not, the summer is going to be spent doing listening sessions with the public and trying to figure out what risks we are in terms of our resilience and then what solutions the different stakeholders have. Uh, but in the, the fall, it's going to be writing that client, that resilience, uh, plan. So, um, there, there's just a lot of unknowns right now, but, um, when I do my liaison updates, I'll keep the council up to date as, as much as I know.
Okay, thank you.
That probably wasn't a very satisfying answer, but.
No, it was, it was, it was fun. I think, uh, you know, obviously the climate change is definitely something that's near and dear and it's important. And we see that our fellow folks on the city side have lots of things that they're doing. And, you know, county could, you know, step up to the plate with that. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Munson.
So I want to, uh, ask about the source of funding for the, um, Energy Conservation Fund. Where, where did those funds come from?
I was not prepared to answer that particular question regarding this fund, but my understanding is this fund was created, um, a few years ago. Might have been, I don't know if it was in twenty thirteen or twenty twelve. I know that when I came into this position, this fund had been created. And the council at that time, there were some people who liked it, some people who didn't like it. Um, and so I know that there was some issues with this particular fund at that time. Um, what had been going into it, and like I say, I cannot speak that, I don't know that anything has been going into it recently. We had been getting rebates when we were changing out our, our lighting systems. Um, there were other updates that we did within our different buildings in which we would get a rebate. Um, and that money would went directly into this.
Right.
Fund.
So, so thank you for refreshing my memory, but I was there back in twenty thirteen. And, um, I recall that it was the rebates that went into this and we thought that was a wise use of, of, collecting these funds so it could be directed toward a, a program that would be of value to the county. And I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Jones and, and Counselor Iverson for putting this together. Um, I've been hopeful that our county would, uh, step forward with, uh, these kinds of environmental concerns and planning for the future.
I, I.
Actually, I'd like to hear what Bree has.
Yeah, Bree, go right ahead.
I'm just taking a quick look at the ledger for this fund. Um, I agree it is, it is funded by rebates. There hasn't been any receipts since twenty nineteen, so, um, it's just kind of, um, cash carry forward.
Counselor McKip.
I just said, since, since we're talking about the history of this fund, um, the, the, I think what, what it was originally set up to do, and this was the controversial part that I think Counselor Hawk had, had issues with, is that the county would set an energy baseline, energy consumption baseline. And any savings from that baseline would, or, or some percentage of savings from baseline, I don't remember which, would then be transferred into this fund to be used for future. would then be transferred into this fund to be used for future energy conservation projects. Now, that those transfers, as far as I know, have never happened or at least have not happened since the beginning. But what has happened is, yeah, just deposits from rebates we get from utilities for various lighting upgrades and other other, you know, HVAC upgrades and that sort of thing.
Right. And there was some sort of a commission put together and they would come forward and say they wanted to spend some of the money. And and we would just say no. But, you know, that was back when we tried to keep the money in County General and keep things operating. So don't have to do that anymore, yes.
I I wanted to comment on this if I could before we opened up. Oh, actually, Counselor Wilt, you go right ahead.
Thanks. I I got distracted by the conversation about the fund. But I wanted to just make sure that I understood that we're doing eight thousand dollars as a contractual payment to IU in exchange for the services of the intern. And that covers three months of the intern and and work working for us. Is that correct?
I'm afraid I don't have the end date or like when fall starts. But it does cover this the summer portion of this program. And actually, it's it's a little bit extra. I believe that the amount that we really have is like six thousand for for this current position and time. And then the additional two thousand was is to give some flexibility to allow for the purchase of supplies if they might be needed.
Just want to clarify real quick. The for ERIs purposes, the professional services for an undergraduate is six thousand dollars. And the professional services for a graduate student is eight thousand dollars. Mr. Atik is a graduate student at the O'Neill School, has a really impressive resume, is really going to be a benefit to us here at Monroe County. And then the two thousand dollars for supplies is going to be so that we can do the data collection, both in person and then also through, you know, energy companies and things like that.
And my apologies, because I I did know that he was at the graduate level and I, that was my error on the six and eight.
There's a lot to know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wilt. I I would just offer the comment. I I support this wholeheartedly and I agree very much with what Counselor Iverson said. A lot of us, particularly as local officials, we talk about these issues. We get very overwhelmed sometimes with what we can do, what we cannot do, how we can make a positive impact. I see this as putting some some meat to the bone of of trying to figure out what we've got to be doing locally, environmentally, to make sure that we are protecting this community as best we can for our future. I also have been thinking a lot about a general theme of where we have county dollars that have not been expended for the purposes or close to the purpose or somewhat near the purpose for which discussed appropriated in the past, we have to be mindful of that, that those dollars are being put to good use. We know that if they're not, we're not always being the steward of it that we need to be. And so I I appreciate that we've got a fellow of this caliber coming on to help us think through it because we need to be thinking hard. And that work needs to start. It won't need to start a long time ago. That's the reality, but here we are. We got to do what we got to do. So that would be my comment to it. I think we've probably talked to this. I'm going to open this up for public comment and I would love it if our fellow elect or designated would introduce himself or maybe say a few words. You have something to.
Yeah, should I go ahead?
Yes, go right ahead. Welcome.
Hi, guys. My name is Heather. Really nice to meet all of you. Listen to your comments, views on it. It's amazing that people are thinking about these things. Because I'm from a country that that is going through much more political turmoil than than the so. Their concerns are a bit more different than 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 that of Monroe County in particular. But I have an energy background. I've been working in the energy sector for about six, seven years before I moved to the US. And it's been a year of a lot of learning, not only from an educational point of view, but also from like just interactions with people and knowing their views on things and in particular, climate resilience. It's an alarming problem. Countries like Pakistan, the the country I'm from, keeping this particular issue on a back burner has in like last year, the floods wrecked havoc in the country and not having a a robust climate resilient plan meant that we were going through recovery process for many months. Many lives lost, a lot of infrastructure da- damage. And that then complicates other issues. So this thing is very close to me, especially climate resilience and how to make. I mean, we cannot probably change or or like the the direction the world is at. Like you and the environment is a shared common good. You cannot even isolate Monroe County from it. But what we can do is make it more resilient to whatever climate related issues are we face. So I'm excited to work with 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 Iverson, Mr. Iverson, and, you know, get feedback from communities, how their priorities are, and maybe design an assessment that is based on what is more practical and applicable.
Thank you so much. And Molly Turner King, you had some comments here in the room.
Um, I did locate the ordinance that established this fund and it was established in on May tenth of two thousand and twelve. So almost eleven years to the date. And I can share my screen if you'd like, which will provide some clauses on the funding sources if you still want to know the history of the fund.
Sure. Yeah.
Or I can email it to you.
I I mean, my suggestion is we we receive that in email accompanied by the list of of deposits that are made. Just we we still have another like twelve items left on the agenda. Unless it's essential for the vote.
I will provide that ordinance by email.
Thank you very much. We've also got a hand raised, Mr. Jim Shelton. So T S D, if you can.
Good evening, Council. I'll be brief in line with Mr. McKim's comments. We certainly support this at the Chamber, the business community. This is a need. We really, really have no comment on where the money came from or anything like that. But the goal of this is a assessment and a plan that we really, really need. And I strongly suggest that you approve this. And I want to say the Chamber has had wonderful success with interns from IU. We just had a young woman who just finished up when she graduated last Saturday, who had been great with us for two years. And we've had really good success. So it's a definite need. And I congratulate Mr. Iverson and Ms. Jones for coming up with this approach. So please approve it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Any other comments? All right, seeing.
I'd I'd like to say one thing. I want to make it clear. I said early on, I support interns. I wish we would do that more often. We have that talent right here. And we've had, when Colby Wicker was our intern, he was marvelous. I just would rather see this money go into County General. And then when we want an intern, we support it out of County General. It's clear. It's not like. So I I just don't support what's happening with this.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
But I welcome an intern.
I think we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wilt.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
No.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed six one.
All right, that will take us to item number eleven from the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for the creation of a new account line in Fund eight one 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 dash nine six two three Crisis Coag supplemental workforce grant. Account line three zero zero two eight, training and travel.
Second.
All right. And it looks like we've got Ms. Kelly here. Ms. Kelly, if you wanted to make some comments on this.
Um, sure. So this is just to add an additional line so our school liaison can attend statewide training events and conferences. We would be doing internal transfers with the money that we already have for the grant. So no additional appropriation is needed, just the account line.
All right, I'll open this up for questions, comments from council. Seeing none, we will open this up for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk. Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wilt.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, we'll move to item number twelve. A, we've got Beth Hamlin here, Counsel.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request for the creation of a new account line and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in Fund eight one two one dash nine six two three Voca grant in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars in the services category.
Second.
Good evening, Counsel. Beth Hamlin from the Prosecutor's Office here. This is a request to appropriate some funding that came available from Indiana Criminal Justice Institute by way of the Voca grant. It's supplemental to the larger grant that we received for our Victim Assistance Department. And this is to send them to a national training in September with the National Center for Victims of Crime.
We will open it up for questions from council. Any questions at all? All right, seeing no questions, we'll open this up for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wilt.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, we'll move now to item number B. This is the additional item on our agenda, Counselor.
All right, number B. Counsel, I move to approve, oops. Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request for the creation of a new account line in Fund one zero 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 dash zero 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 nine, General Fund Prosecutor, Account Line three zero zero one three, Professional Services.
Second.
Thank you so much for putting this on today. We just learned recently that our grant funded employees are required to go through background checks, fingerprint background checks. And we did not create a line for that because we did not foresee the expense. We have enough money to transfer. It's under two hundred dollars total and I'm just requesting to create the line.
Okay, questions from council? Any? All right, seeing no questions, we'll open it up for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wilt.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to item number thirteen, the Legal Department. We've got Dave Schilling here.
Good evening.
Let me read the motion. Thank you. Counsel, I move to approve the Legal Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund one zero 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 dash zero two seven seven legal fund, General Fund Legal, excuse me, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars in the services category.
Second.
Thank you very much, Dave Schilling from the Legal Department, requesting an additional appropriation of thirty thousand dollars for our litigation deduction line. And we have two litigation lines in our budget. One is called litigation, which we use for depositions or things like that. And that's originally appropriated at a thousand dollars each year. We have a second litigation line called litigation deduction, which is what we use for our insurance defense cases. And that's appropriated at thirty thousand dollars a year. For the last couple of years, however, we've been involved in two lawsuits that are not covered by the Insurance Defense Council that we hire. One is the Huff case and the other is the the county's case against the United States Forest Service. And this year, those two cases have, we paid bills of twenty nine thousand, a little over twenty nine thousand dollars for. So between the two litigation lines, we have about thirty one thousand. We paid out twenty nine. We're going to be facing more insurance bills as the year goes on. The US Forest case, I don't think we will receive much billing for the rest of this year. It's sort of on hold in the Seventh Circuit. And the Huff case, it just depends on when the Southern District of Indiana, of Indiana Federal Court rules on our our motion to dismiss. And if that happens later in the year, then then we might incur some more legal fees at that time. Right now, we're kind of in a in a quiet period.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schilling. Open it up for questions or comments from the council.
Counselor Iverson. I I certainly support this and and ongoing work the legal team is doing. So thank you.
Counselor McKim.
I'm just going to say I'm going to pass on this because I'm recusing myself from any anything involving the US Forest Service litigation.
Thank you, Counsel. All right.
And and I did not support suing the United States. So I will be voting no. Didn't support that to begin with.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Hawk. Seeing no further comments, I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we will do a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Abstain.
Counselor Wilt.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
No.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed five to one no, one abstain.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. This will take us to item number fourteen on our agenda, Solid Waste Management District.
Counsel, I move to approve the Solid Waste Management's request for an additional appropriation Fund eighty two ten, Special Solid Waste Management Fund in the amount of ninety three thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars in the capital category.
Second.
Good evening. I do appreciate your consideration of this matter. You can see in the agenda request, this is replace two trucks out of our fleet that are aging. I think one's thirteen going on fourteen years old, the other's fifteen going on sixteen years old. And these are two vehicles that are that are, you know, very important to us and to what we do. One is what we call our compliance vehicle. This is the truck that we use when we're out doing remediation of roadside dumping and litter, also doing investigation of, you know, private property compliance cases with regard to Monroe County Code Chapter three sixty. And that's a truck divided, that's what we to what we do, one core things of our mission. The other is what we call our landfill vehicle and that's that truck's pretty much dedicated to our staff that do the monitoring compliance of the Monroe County landfill. And again, both of these trucks are aging and showing their age. Repairs are getting excessive in their need and their cost. And also present some concerns regarding staff safety. Oftentimes, the the staff that's using these trucks wind up in areas that are remote with poor cell phone service. And obviously, a truck that's not reliable could could put.
Uh, and obviously, um, a truck that's not reliable could, uh, could put them in a perilous position. So, we certainly appreciate your consideration of this matter. Um, I would note, uh, that, uh, the, uh, the F-250, uh, the compliance vehicle was something we had planned, uh, to replace in, in 2024. Uh, unfortunately, uh, after, um, uh, recent repair work, we were advised that what they did was a temporary fix and we needed to get that truck replaced ASAP.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGlasson. We'll open it up for questions or comments from counsel. To my left, Counsel Munson.
After hearing about the repairs on these two vehicles, year after year after year, I can, I want to assure my, my fellow counselors and the public that this, uh, it is time to invest in different vehicles.
Thank you, Counsel Munson. Counselor, counselors to my right. All right, seeing none, we'll open this up for public comment.
Actually, I, I wanted to make a comment that, that although, um, I was unable to actually, uh, attend the board meeting where this was approved because, uh, I was on business travel. We did discuss extensively at the executive committee meeting, looked at the financing, looked at the available cash reserves, and I, I definitely supported as well.
And might I just say, I did ask him if he had reviewed that since he's on the board and said he had, so. Our budget guru said, go for it.
Thank you very much. All right, any further from counsel? Seeing none, I'll open it up for comments from the public. Those in the room can come forward to the podium or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much. Now we go to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve that counsel officially accept responsibility for post-closure care on behalf of the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District pursuant to Indiana Administrative Code 329 AIC 10-39-3.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McGlasson.
Uh, again, uh, uh, thank you. Uh, this, uh, an annual thing, uh, for, for the district perspective, it's an annual housekeeping measure. Uh, owners of closed landfills are required to provide the state, uh, with an annual update of the financial assurance to ensure that funds are available, uh, to, to maintain and, uh, monitor that landfill through the, uh, the 30-year post-closure monitoring period. Uh, I believe we're in year 14 of that 30-year period at this time. And, uh, we, we certainly appreciate, uh, the, the council's generosity and willingness to, to do this, make this demonstration on our behalf in previous years. Uh, note, uh, for, uh, for this year, the cost estimate, uh, for the remaining post-closure, uh, is $2,428,672. Uh, unfortunately, we found ourselves in this position last year as well. This is a slight increase from the previous year, uh, which is strictly a factor of, um, the state does require inflation to be factored into the estimation, uh, for, for those costs. So, but as, um, we also bring to the council's attention every year, uh, the district, uh, does have a, uh, a post-closure trust fund, related to that landfill and, and having funds, uh, to take care of for it. As of today, the balance of that trust fund is $741,927. And in, uh, since 2008, when the, the landfill was closed, uh, we've had to use that trust fund one time. The state didn't require us to put in some additional groundwater monitoring wells. Uh, we pulled funds, uh, from that trust fund to do that. Uh, other than that, the district has been able to, uh, to budget for the, uh, the management and maintenance of that landfill annually in its operating budget.
Thank you, Mr. McGlasson. Comments or questions from counsel? Counselor McKim?
Yeah, since, uh, since the last time we did this, uh, last year, have there been any, any conditions that have changed that would increase the county's, uh, risk exposure?
Uh, no, uh, we've not been notified of the state of any concerns regarding our, uh, our groundwater, but we sample the groundwater twice a year. And, uh, we're, we have a, we do, we have to manage the leachate, the liquids that come out of the hill. We treat as much of that onsite as we can under an NPDS permit. Uh, the remainder does get hauled to a local wastewater treatment plant. Leachate generation numbers are slightly elevated, uh, from, from previous years, but not anything, uh, that our budget, uh, can't handle and not anything that the state has notified us they're concerned about.
Thank you. Counselor Iverson?
And so we're on a 30-year plan, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, there, the, the, the state law does, uh, requires a 30-year post-closure monitoring period for all closed landfills. And, uh, I, I, I am not aware at this point of any facility that has been closed that long. So, you know, can't guarantee that at the end of that 30 years, the state will say walk away. A lot of that's just going to depend on, uh, you know, the, uh, the condition or the results from the groundwater sampling, uh, the conditions of the trash hills. And, uh, what the state feels is in the best interest, uh, for the, for the environment and the community moving forward.
Yeah, the, the scope of this is just really mind-boggling, just, you know.
Sorry?
The scope of this is quite, is quite large, you know, that, that $500,000 a year, that's combined with, with the rest to make up that, that 2 million. That's, that's quite something.
Yeah.
All right. No further questions from or comments from counsel. I'll open it up for comments or public comments, I should say. Anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGlasson. Appreciate it very much. I did want to make a note before we move on to the next item. I am going to, if, uh, counsel is, uh, okay with it, I'm going to move or ask that we move item number 19C, Discussion Review and Consideration of Approval Resolution 2023-09, Establishing the Justice Financial Advisory Commission, to move that right after Ms. Ridge and the highway departments. I believe it's two requests, three requests that they have. So that's okay with counsel. We'll do that without objection. Okay.
No objection.
Let's move on then to the highway department, number 15, item 15, Ms. Ridge and Counsel Iverson.
Counsel, I move to approve the highway department's request for a fund-to-fund transfer of cash in the amount of $507,852.80. Is that the right amount from Fund 1135-0000, cumulative bridge to Fund 8161-0000, sample road phase one?
Second.
All right, Ms. Ridge?
Good evening. Um, so we will start, um, hopefully finishing up this project after many years. Um, so after, um, completion of the project and it's closed, we are required to have a zero balance in our grant fund. So we have to transfer from our funds that, uh, take in the revenue that, to be able to pay for these projects. Uh, this was a portion that where we addressed the drainage concerns, um, and culvert replacements and everything along the project. So we came up with that allocated cost towards that and as transferring that cash from our cum bridge will come to a later date and start transferring from our local road street. Again, we, we're taking away from the funds that get the revenue to pay for the projects through the, in the grant, grant account lines.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ridge. We're also joined by Mr. Turner. We welcome him. Questions, comments from counsel? Seeing none, we'll open this up for comments from the public. Seeing none on that, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much. That'll take us to 15B.
Counsel, I move to approve the highway department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1176-0000, Motor Vehicle Highway in the amount of $1,130,000 in the supplies category.
Second.
I was trying to get Mr. Turner up here to present this, but and I wanted to say hi to Charlotte. Actually, Charlotte hired me almost 36 years ago. So
That's great.
I don't know whether to thank you or not, Charlotte.
Yeah, we will thank Charlotte. Welcome back to the courthouse, Commissioner. Good to see you.
So yeah, we, um, have built a pretty big paving program, as you all know, because you've assisted us in funding from your rainy day fund of $1 million, Community Crossing Funds, last July call, um, this January call, ARPA funds to help us with subdivisions. And it's greatly appreciated. Uh, we are asking to take $1 million from our cash balance in MVH to also use those funds, and it, it is all going to paving.
We'll open this up for comments or questions from counselors.
See there, I get to do my happy dance on this one. I think this is wonderful. And you know, this is really a public safety issue. How many people get out there and drive and they hit one of those big potholes? It's dangerous, folks. And this is, uh, trying to save our roads. And by the way, your crew was out there today, working patching, uh, part of it. I don't know whether they're getting ready to do something bigger or just patching.
I'm not sure what road that, what road?
So is it, is the hot, is the hot mix ready now? That's wonderful. Okay, well, anyway, thank you very much.
We have a long way to go. Um, this is a, this is a big hurdle, but, um, does it address all the needs that we have out there? Absolutely not. I'm not sure if you get the emails, the phone calls that we get on a daily basis. We have almost 710 miles of roadway. And our hope is to get 46 miles done with the money that we're doing this year. So, um, it's, the need is always going to be there. Uh, we're just trying to make a difference and do the best we can.
Thank you, Ms. Ridge. Other comments, questions? Counsel Iverson?
I will just note that if you can make Marty Hawk dance, then you're doing something right. That's pretty, that's pretty interesting. Uh, I, I will say though, I, I have had, uh, someone come up to me very recently who lives down by Lake Monroe and was singing your praises. Uh, they were just really excited about all the work that you're doing, not only, uh, down where, where they're from, but also throughout the county. So we, we're also hearing good things.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Um, I have to commend Toby, um, and the two assistants at the garage. They're the ones that really put these numbers together, inspect the roads, and, and prioritize. Um, some people don't, some residents probably don't understand how we choose these roads, and if we could choose more, we would. If we could stretch that dollar farther, we would. Um, but our MVH budget in by two minutes also goes to patching, crack sealing. It has to cover everything, not just the paving. So, um, kudos to the group out there, the crews, because everybody works to stretch those dollars and come up with a good plan and prioritize these roads.
Yeah.
I just want to add, congratulations on all the work that you do to bring money here. You are, are one of the most popular Monroe County officials to the state, and you have built a beautiful partnership with them in that. So we appreciate your work on that. It does not go unnoticed, and I know the residents may not always say it or feel it, but deep down, that's there.
Thank you.
Other, all right, seeing none, we'll open this up for comments from the public. Seeing none with that, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, we'll now go to item C, uh, from, also from the highway department.
Counsel, I move to approve the highway department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 9106-0000, Community Crossings Matching Grant in the amount of $674,963.02 in the supplies category.
No, second.
All right.
Um, so in the July 2022 call, um, that was awarded, I believe maybe November, December. Um, so the county was awarded the 1.2 million, which is basically double of what the CCMG award is. After we did bids, uh, we were, um, the bid came in at, well, I guess double of 674,963.02. That is what the state, uh, sent to us for our, that Community Crossing Matching Grant Program. Um, and then our funds will supply the remainder of the $674,000. The roads that were in that call, I believe, have already have been paved. Uh, just completed last week, we had the funds existing, um, in the existing lines already. Those roads were Harmony Road, Steinsville Road, Union Valley Road, and Chapel Hill Road. So, yeah, and then we'll be back to ask for the million-dollar match from the January call in the next month or so.
Right.
Pretty hard to do that pitying when the tree's right in the way with what? There was a tree down in, on Union Valley Road. I, was that in the middle of the?
It was, I think it was right after I saw, or something, we had gotten a call on that, of course.
And there's straight, it's with, or no storm or anything.
Okay, other questions, comments?
Just keep it coming. Congratulations on the million dollars for, for this year's, uh, cycle.
Thank you. It's a, definitely a group effort.
Well, you do a great job. All right, no further comments from counsel. We'll go to the public for public comments. We've got hand raised, Mr. Jim Shelton.
Good evening again. I just want to, uh, say ditto to Mr. Deckard and Mr. McCam. As a member of the county's RDC, I have often been in awe of Ms. Ridge's ability to work with the state and to secure funding. So this is another example. It's great now that my son lives out in the county and is trying to be sort of a gentleman farmer. Uh, I am familiar more now than I used to be with the state of roads out there, and, and Ms. Ridge is right. We've got a tremendous need. And she does a super job along with her staff of securing funding for it and then using it. So please approve this and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shelton. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ridge, Mr. Turner. All right, that will then take us now, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to move to item 19C, the Discussion Review and Consideration of Approval Resolution 2023-9.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion, review, and consideration of approval for Resolution 2023-09 to establish the Justice Financial Advisory Committee.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on that. We'll open this up for Counsel Iverson's going to start us off.
All right, uh, so, uh, as many of you all know, uh, the CJRC has been suspended, uh, at this time by the Monroe County Commissioners. And, uh, we thought that this would be a good time in conjunction with the Monroe County Commissioners to start a body to investigate, uh, the fiscal concerns of, uh, our, our justice, uh, needs. And, uh, that we've, uh, created a resolution with the help of our legal team, uh, to create this body and set out its parameters. Uh, today, we'd like to have that discussion of, uh, that resolution. And, uh, I'll share my screen in just a second, but at first I did want to note that yesterday there was, uh, an executive session, um, and which we discussed, uh, some of these things. And I just wanted to make a note that, uh, we are in very close communication with not only the county commissioners, but also the sheriff's department. with not only the county commissioners, but also the sheriff's department and other associated bodies. Um, we are working uh as quickly and as closely as we can to make as much progress as possible. And with that, I'll share my screen for an ease of um, of talking about this. And for those of you watching from home, this is on page one hundred and thirty five of the packet for today's meeting, which can be found at the Monroe County calendar at co.munro.in.us. Let me share my screen. All right, let, so we are going to uh skip down to the now therefore be it resolved that the Monroe County Council would create this JFAK. It's what we're, we're a government body, so we like our acronyms. Uh, it's pursuant to Monroe County's Home Rule Authority and the Indiana Code. And at this point, we're thinking that we consist of three council members. The duties are laid out as follows. That uh we will serve in an advisory role to the council by obtaining key information from local stakeholders to facilitate responsible informed financial decisions. I'm not going to read this out loud to everybody. I will all summarize. JFAK will meet with community stakeholders to gain necessary information regarding their needs and shared objectives to better identify the fiscal impact of addressing these needs. Again, uh, our goal here is to be very narrowly focused on fiscal matters. We are committing to hosting bi-weekly listening sessions to provide local stakeholders and the public or any others in with a vested interest uh the opportunity to voice their inputs and their concerns in public meetings. And we will make recommendations back to the council. And we wanted this to be, to be clear that we wanted this to be time sensitive. We didn't want this to lag on forever and ever, uh, tentatively honored before September twenty twenty three on the following objectives. What can we do to reduce the number of community members entering the justice system? For those of you who are familiar with the intercept model, uh, that's intercept models, that's intercept zero. What can we do to reduce reciproc, uh, recid, reduce recidivism, including investments in reentry services and community corrections? That's intercepts four, five, and six. What investments can the county council make to promote equity in terms of race, ethnicity, and gender within the justice system? The timeline and what funding sources? We reserve the right to discuss additional objectives. And in the case that we hit stalemate and um we are uh no longer being productive, uh, we give the power to the Monroe County Council to stop its work. So if um, or if we get the work done beforehand, uh, then we can, the body will disband automatically uh unless county council acts. So that's the brief rundown of page one thirty six or one thirty five and one thirty six in the council agenda. Uh, what thoughts do we have?
Thank you, Counsel Irvinson, and, and thank you for continued work in this effort. I'm gonna start here on the right, Counselor McKim.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, I have two questions. First of all, it appears that this uh, this draft has changed significantly since that draft was kind of circulated. And I'm curious as to the reasoning for, for those changes. And then second, I'm cur, I'm kind of interested in the justification for the December uh twenty twenty three deadline. Other than, I guess it will be a new council. There's a new council every year, uh, but uh, it seems like the duties would, it, it seems to me that there's a certain number of needs that would probably best be uh served before budgets. And then, you know, beyond that, there's going to be uh, when, when we start making uh decisions as to actually building a jail, there's probably going to be needs beyond December twenty twenty three. So I guess that's more of a comment, um, but I'm, I'm interested in hearing a little bit about the, the changes that have occurred since sure, the draft was circulating to them.
I, I can speak. I don't know that I um necessarily need to be on the hook for all the changes, but I can be. Um, one, one of the original drafts was creating a body that looked very much like CJRC with fifteen, sixteen members. And we were concerned, uh, at least there was concern raised, I should say, about um, not only quorum, but also whether or not that would meet the fiscal needs of this body. Um, and it's, and so there was some, some concern about, you know, whether or not uh that, that size of body would work. There are people that's, that, that still think that that body, that size of body is, is completely appropriate. And I, I, I don't think that that, that would be wrong. It's just two ways to look at the same issue. Um, and uh, I, I know there's also been some concerns about um, uh, if we were to go out and do listening sessions out in the public, um, what uh Indiana's open door law would say about that. Um, and there's been ongoing conversations about, you know, what does a, a committee of the council look like in terms of quorum and in terms of, of those sorts of things? But um, I, I think uh Councilmember Wiltz has also been involved in many of these conversations as well as Councilmember Crossley. So um, I think I'll, I'll kick it over to Councilmember Wiltz. If that's all right with you.
Yeah, Counsel, Counselor Wiltz.
Yeah, um, it does look a lot different than um what we originally had put together. And I'm hoping that um, really that we can get some input here today on, on just your reactions to this setup. Because as uh Counsel Irvinson mentioned, we're not entirely in, you know, in the full agreement on the best way to do this. I think if we go forward with this smaller version, so just a three-member committee, we would have um, the public meetings. I, hopefully, um, some sort of a facilitated experience with um public input. And um, we would strongly encourage the primary stakeholders in county government, in um city government, local, other law enforcement bodies. Um, all, all aspects of the, the criminal justice system, social service agencies, um, treatment, um, providers, uh, people with lived experience. I mean, all of those folks have been on our list of, of people we want to contact, but we'd also like them to be providing feedback to us um, on what we're finding. So this, this structure that's before us today is the product of a lot of discussion and also the product of uh the limitations that county government places on how we can have meetings and do business. So I would love to hear ideas if there are other um, formats or structures. I think that's something that's still appropriate for discussion.
And also just, is it helpful to have it up on the screen or is it not needed?
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Crossley.
So I appreciate, um, as one of the other members on the now suspended CJRC, um, I do think that this was, the suspension maybe was somewhat of a blessing in disguise for us to really sit still and think about what it is that we truly want to do. Of course, all of us can agree that we are not trying to kick this can or uh push this further down the road because we know what we are up against. Um, but it definitely gave us some pause to think about what it is that we're doing. And we also heard lots of conversation from community as well. And we continue to hear so from the emails that we receive. And so I do appreciate, you know, all the work that we are doing, um, and all the work that has got us to this point where we are in talks of creating JFAK. Um, I understand the idea of the, you know, the three role. Um, but as Counselor McKim pointed out, it has changed a little bit. Um, and I'll be quite honest, I do still feel like I like the larger body. Uh, you know, again, and not having the larger bodies, not saying that we're not going to be doing any of this and without public input, um, and not saying that we won't have public um, be involved or, you know, doing things behind closed doors or anything like that. So let me just be frank and clear that all of these things, as we talk about transparency, um, that will still be something that we are definitely wanting to make sure that we have, however we go. But for me and myself as one person, I do feel like, you know, even with the CJRC, we never really had issues with quorum. And I do think that those committee members that were there, that if they were, if we do decide to go to a larger body, that folks will still continue to be committed. We all are committed. And I don't think quorum would have an issue of this. I understand that sometimes when you have a larger body, larger things, like trying to make decisions happen. But I do feel like if we have a clear understanding and a clear expectations of what it is that we are asking for our committee members, if we do decide to go larger, that we will, there's no doubt about it that I don't feel like we will keep moving on this train and making sure that we are focused and laser focused on the issue at hand and the timeline that we are. And I think maybe that was something that was lacked in our CJRC. And that's not to say anything bad about anybody, so please don't mistake anything that I'm saying as a hit on anybody. I'm not saying that at all. But I do think that we can be, as the fiscal body, we own our power with this. And we have a way for doing this with the larger body, however counsel colleagues feel. So that's just what I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Other questions, comments, Counselor?
Just, just the logistics of it, because, you know, I'm always budget minded. And we know what happens now. Uh, it's summer. Auditors are going to be absolutely busy trying to get their jobs done. And we can't ask them to participate in this because we, they're already overloaded. So I would think, even though as much as we need the auditor's assistance on this, it, they're not going to have the time to sit in on meetings with everybody, bringing different ideas and so forth forward. They're going to want to be laser focused on just the fiscal issues. How are we going to finance it and, and, and so forth? And same thing as the council staff, because this is right in the middle of getting ready for budgets. And, you know, already we see hours and hours over regular time, council staff putting in to get ready for our budgets, as all seven of us are also supposed to be doing. So for those of you who have the extra time to meet with the public at large, and, and I appreciate that because then they have an opportunity to say what they think is important to be included in a plan. Our position should be, how are we going to fund it? Where's the money going to come from? Uh, what's going on at the state where we can use dollars that they, you know, we counted on that? House Bill one oh oh six, well, then when we started looking at the fine lines, oh, that didn't fix it. Ten million to be split up amongst, you know, two and a half million per county, that's four counties. And each county that would accept it has to take on multiple counties. So that's not going to fix situation, the big situation we're talking about. Set in for quite a long time on Senate Bill four today. And that has to do with our local health department. Many of us sitting in that meeting thought it was going to cover some of the mental health issues or what we might be able to do with the jail support. No, that's not what it is about. It is funding to provide for our local health department. So then where's the other dollars? Well, we need to study what the Senate Bill one say because that's the funding. And then the, uh, the other one is the Thompson one that passed at the last minute. Cause they were moving the bills around after midnight, how, which bills was going to be the, the funding bills that passed. So there might be something in there that helps us, but that's our job. We're the fiscal body. It's our job to look at the dollars. Where can we pull the money from? What is it going, and we need to get uh expert advice. Uh, you know, when we had Greg Garretos here the other day, we need to talk with somebody. If we bond, how many years can you bond out? What is the bond payment for different price ranges? And then what is the tax implications to the taxpayer? Those are the things that we need to be looking at, we, as a fiscal body. Does this sound like as if I'm being uh difficult? I'm just trying to be realistic, folks. This is our job.
Thank you, Counselor Hawk. Uh, one thing is, I, I think all counselors have heard a lot from um, the public on that. And I think there might be some wisdom in opening it up to public comment at this point to hear if there's thoughts out there and wisdom from our community. So with that, I'm going to open it up to public comment. And uh, we've got our first commenter right here to the left. And for those others that wish to speak, we'll raise a hand on Zoom and uh come to the podium as Abel.
Hey, can you hear me?
I think, is it on?
Yeah. Okay. It does that work better? Yes, I'm very, very honored to be in front of you as a citizen. I'm here as a citizen of Monroe County. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. But, but I, I bring some experience to the table too. And I want to say I'm very, I, I, I just want to throw in something about Lisa Ridge. When I became a county commissioner, people said, what does she know about roads? And I said, I know enough to find somebody who knows about roads. And there is an experience, I was, that was right. We, we picked the right one. So good for Lisa and all the people around her, Bill Williamson, so forth. Anyway, that's neither here nor there. I am here today to say I'm so sorry to be here because we should not be talking about, about this without the county commissioners present. And in fact, the county commissioners are going to ultimately be the ones who make the final decision on this issue. It's a very complicated issue. Believe me, I fully understand how tremendously complicated this thing is. And it really is going to require interaction of everybody with everybody and, and, and open and transparent and, and, and not, not playing games, not, not, not getting mad and closing down a committee that you've just made, which is unfortunate. And, and I think we should be glad that we have a sheriff who has shared with us some things that most people in the community had no idea about. One of the things about the jail, for example, is that nobody ever goes there unless they're an inmate or very seldom do they see what the conditions are. The same thing is true in the courtroom. I'd say, we don't know, most of us have no idea what happens in the courtroom. Otherwise, you know, we, we do see what happens in the streets and so forth. There are all the other, the, so, so there's a lot that, that we, we as, as citizens should be knowing more about than we do, and it's not easy. So I'm here to encourage you as the, as the, the fiscal body of the county. You have unique, you have unique powers to encourage, encourage a resolution of working of, of this issue, working together with the county commissioners and all the other uh, many, many parts of this complicated county system. Because you do hold the purse strings, and I know that very, very well. I ran into that many times and you had, we, I learned that you, you, you have to work with people if you're going to get something done. And so I, I'm urging you to, to do what you're, you're intending to do. It seems to be a little radical maybe at this point, but I think it's the one, the, the one way we can move the needle. And, and I think it's brilliant of you to come up with this suggestion. And I hope that you are serious, take it seriously and, and pass it. And that once, once people are working on that, that we then work out once, once again, reaching towards each other and, and inviting the commissioners to come back to the table. You can't bring them, but they can come back, and I think they will understand that. So I, I think this is the most positive thing that we can do, you can do right now. And I'm a citizen, so I say we. And I, I wonder if you have any questions, if you wonder why I'm talking here today.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
All right. Another speaker in the room want to come forward to the podium.
Thank you. Gloria Howell, Secretary for the Monroe County Branch of the NAACP. Thank you for this time. To the members of the Monroe County Council, we, the Monroe County Branch of the NAACP, commend you for continuing strategic conversations around community justice, despite the suspension of the Community Justice Reform Committee, Response Committee, I'm sorry. We encourage each council member to vote affirmatively for Resolution 2023-09, which calls for the establishment of the Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee. As members of this community, we joined our fellow residents in attending bi-weekly CJRC meetings, thereby taking advantage of the opportunity to engage with our elected. thereby taking advantage of the opportunity to engage with our elected officials on topics pertaining to criminal justice response, specifically the conditions of the facilities in which incarcerated individuals live. When we learned that the county commissioners had suspended the Community Justice Reform meetings, we were concerned, disappointed, and wondering about the implications of this action on the broader mission of community justice work. We feel strongly that the work of community justice must always be done in public and with broad public engagement, inclusion, and transparency. We encourage the county council, as the fiscal body of county government, to take lead in continuing this important work in the public eye. Please use your influence and authority to speak up for the underrepresented, for those whose voices are not often heard, and to truly defend the rights of all. Ensure that your allocation of taxpayer dollars reflects these values. We trust and expect you to collaborate and communicate for the common good. We amplify our commitment to support your work and welcome the opportunity to engage collaboratively in hopes of building a sustainable infrastructure for community justice reform. We believe it's important for us to put in motion the same level of community collaboration that we hope to see among elected officials. To that end, we are facilitating the development of a coalition with community organizations to focus on community justice holistically. Our aim is to, is to connect with these organizations and solidify ways to not only support you, but to create a culture of community justice in Monroe County. We recognize that the tasks before you are challenging, but we do offer our support, and thank you for your service, hard work, and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. On Zoom, I see we've got a hand up. Invite that speaker to come forward, or T S D, however we need to do that.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, this is Margie Rice, and, um, I want to commend the council on your leadership for taking this step forward and echo the comments made by Charlotte and, um, Gloria. So, you know, I think that while you're saying tonight that your focus should be narrow, I'm a little concerned about that, honestly, because I think that you have a big role in county government. And I hope that you understand how important every decision you make, and I know every meeting you're considering an additional appropriation or some kind of funding, and really thinking about, this is work that needs to be done all year long, every year, when you're talking about social, social justice and the lives of people. I mean, you talk about roads, you talk about infrastructure, and you're talking about environment and, uh, environmental resiliency. Let's talk about building the infrastructure that supports humans and building resilient humans and the kind of environment we need, um, to support humans. So now that I'm no longer in county government, I hear a lot more comments from the public, and I hear people saying, why aren't we focusing more on health? Why do we spend so many millions of dollars on incarceration as opposed to health? So I'd really like the council to think about that for the twenty twenty-four budget and think about how you can grow the health levy to support people and to build that human infrastructure. And as for the meeting schedules, just schedule a meeting and open the door and invite the public in, because they are craving that kind of interaction with their leaders. And in fact, I think they're expecting it. And I, I feel like if it's not given, uh, there are going to be ramifications for that. So I would just encourage you to set a meeting, open the door, and see who shows up. And just because you can have an executive session doesn't mean you have to have one. You know, that's an exception to the open door law. So just open the door, invite the public in, because they have some great things to say. Um, you know, so again, what the takeaway from my comments, I want to commend you for your leadership. I want you to own your power, and, and I look forward to seeing you guys really lead, because as, as Councilmember Crossley said, I think this is a, a door that just opened for you. And, and I, I'm looking forward to seeing you walk through it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment, Ms. Rice. In the room, we've got our next speaker.
Greetings from, uh, city government. It's about Pete Mont Smith of Bloomington City Council. Um, I'm very much in support of, um, Resolution twenty twenty-three oh nine to establish the Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee. I, as to the question of what size or who the committee should include, I think that's less important than, um, being, whoever from this body is on that committee, being truly open to hearing public comment, um, offering public comment period on every agenda item and not just once in a meeting. Uh, and, uh, just being open to the, um, the input that is, uh, you know, comes with lived experience, comes with, um, uh, the scholarship at Indiana University comes with, uh, uh, community leadership at, at all levels. Um, as to the funding, um, I agree with Counselor Hawk that we should not, and we cannot rely on something trickling down from the state. Uh, for one thing, it would take a long time, and this is past due, that we, uh, address, um, community justice, especially in terms of prevention and reducing recidivism. And, uh, I post to you that you have about thirteen million dollars a year, thanks to the, um, ED Lit that was passed last year. Um, and that's a great funding source, and I believe that's what the commissioners had in mind as well. Um, there are still ARPA funds that could be tapped for the, the crisis of, um, fentanyl and other drug use that our community is in. It is a crisis, and I, I urge, uh, action on that as well. As far as your role, I, I would echo, um, Margie Rice, um, you, you have power. You have to approve appropriations, and you could send a clear message to the commissioners of what kind of appropriations you would approve and what kind you would not. Uh, it's a matter of values and principles of our community. And so I urge you to, uh, move forward with this, uh, committee and, um, allow the public to, to attend and to give input and, uh, so that you can reach a conclusion as to what um, you as the fiduciary body, uh, feel is the best way to spend public money. Um, also, as a member of the NAACP, I'd like to thank Dr. Howell for, for the statement. Uh, I totally agree with, uh, that input, and I believe there is a meeting scheduled for next, um, Monday at four thirty, that the NAACP is convening, uh, groups, uh, across the community that are interested in this issue. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I see a hand raised on Zoom, uh, Jim Shelton.
Good evening again, Council. Uh, Jim Shelton, I'm speaking as a CASA right now. First of all, I want to applaud you for stepping into this leadership role and taking on this. I think it was a very wise thing for you to do, and I have great hopes for it. I really want to applaud, if you read, uh, and I'm sure you have, uh, Item D, your duty, under your duties, all of the things there, uh, only one of them does it have a short phrase that references the construction of a, a, of a jail. All the rest of it is talking about how to keep people out of the jail, deal with substance abuse, deal with mental health, deal with recidivism. And, uh, uh, you know, as a CASA, a lot of the parents of the children for whom I've been the CASA have been in the criminal justice system, and they really need a lot of help. And when they have gotten it, there have been folks who have worked through addiction, and almost all the parents that I've dealt with over the last ten and a half year, eleven years now, have had addiction problems. The ones that have been successful have been incarcerated and had programs that worked with them from, usually from outside. Once they were out, they were required to do programs. And they have been sometimes successful, and without those programs, they quite frankly, aren't successful. So I applaud what you're doing. I'm really encouraged by the emphasis you put on everything above building the jail, and I fully understand we need to build a new jail. But we need to do a whole bunch more than that, and I'm really happy to see that you're addressing all those other things. So I wish you the very best. I hope the, uh, commissioners will work with you, and I applaud your taking leadership on this. So I please approve this. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments that have not, oh, Auditor Smith?
Yes, um, I would like to address, um, a, a couple of issues beyond community justice and social justice. But actually, the, the mechan, the mechanism that we judge whether the financial implication is a good, is a good implication or negative implication. And I think even though you, if you create this three-member board, you still need more help, more feet on the ground. And I propose having, your body having a, a project manager associated with this project. Um, someone, um, like, like Courtney Mosher, who has a degree in law, law enforcement or criminal justice, expanding that role so that she can be, she can talk to all the different people. Three people on a committee cannot get around to everyone, and then you have to worry about a fourth person showing up and it, and it violating open door laws, which I'm supposed to make sure you guys don't do. So, so what I'm proposing is, is basically a project manager for looking at the financial implications and answering your guys' questions, meeting with, uh, meeting with staff, meeting, you know, internal staff, meeting with external groups, and, and basically being your eyes and ears in the community and getting back with you guys as a body, not just the three people. I really honestly think that this is going to be a big project. Funding, it's probably going to be one of the biggest things you guys do in this. We should take it seriously, and, and we should throw the resource at it right now with, with all the money that people have mentioned. We have several pots of money right now. You know, changing a position from part-time to full-time, e- especially, especially such a needed position. I, I think it just needs some internal project management that, that we, the Auditor's Office, and not, will not have time to do, because we're doing ARPA, because we're doing the, the annexation and everything else, all this special special stuff. For instance, food and beverage. Remember how hard I worked on food and beverage? And now we're actually getting some money back, because all the fines and fees of people paying at late is really going to go back into general fund. So there's so many little tiny things that you guys don't know about that we do, and that we have to keep that train a-moving. Does that make sense? So I honestly think that you need another set of hands just to look at the numbers and provide the data, drill down into the data, drill down into the roots, uh, uh, in essence, a project manager.
Thank you, Auditor Smith. Lot of wisdom from the public. Counsel will come back to us here. Uh, Counselor McKim, I see a hand.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so first of all, I, I am definitely going to support this, uh, this resolution. I will say that, and, and I think I may, I may have heard some of this concern coming from Counselor Crossley as well. I am a little bit concerned about eliminating the other members, non-council members as actual named members to the committee. I, I I understand why you're doing it. It, with, with a group that large, it may be impossible to get a quorum, and we wind up canceling more meetings than we actually hold. So I, I do get that, but I, I tell you, we will need, whoever the, the chair is of this committee, uh, or all the members of the committee will need to go out of their way, I think, to recruit and encourage many of the, the positions, the roles that had been on the draft that had previously been circulated. You know, the person with lived experience, for example, a center stone representative. We're going to have to go out of our way to encourage them to come to a meeting. Just an announcement of a public meeting isn't going to be enough to, uh, to get the folks there at the table that we really need. So I think we just recognize that, but that downsizing the committee itself is probably the right, the right direction, but it's going to be work to make sure that we get all the voices at the table that need to be there.
Thank you. Counselor Wiltz.
Yeah, thanks. Um, Counselor McKim, I definitely agree with you on that, and that's exactly why I would like to, um, for the council to, to think about, um, supporting to some extent what Auditor Smith was saying. Um, I, I think we're going to need a little bit more support from, um, our council assistant, um, who has been supporting the CJRC. I think that she, she could be very helpful in coordinating, um, what the three people, if we remain a three-person kind of body, are able to do. Um, we will not be able to, for instance, meet with a stakeholder group together because of open door law. If we're a three-person committee, only one of us can go and do anything at any one time, so that's sort of that flip, flip side of, of the large versus, uh, small, the limitations. Another thing I wanted to ask about is I'm getting to it. Um, the, the, oh, the open public meetings that are mentioned, um, as perhaps occurring every other week. I guess this is a question maybe for, um, our attorney, but I am wanting them to be not just, uh, meetings where we talk about, um, an issue, and then there's public comment. I would like them to be more of a back and forth, of a, of a dialogue. Um, and I would like to have it perhaps facilitated by, um, a neutral party. And I'm wondering how realistic that is, given that county government meetings seem to have so many, so very many rules and, um, for participation. So I'm wondering if that's realistic.
Thank you, Counselor Wiltz. Anyone want to respond to, to that last part? I, I will say that, just personally, I think we've had a lot of success in the past with facilitated assistance in meetings. And getting that doesn't mean that we're, we're admitting we have limitations. It's embracing that we do. And, and using the best tools that we have in the community to get those things done. Um, uh, we've had a long history with that. We have professionals in this community who've studied issues around change, policy, you name it, and they can assist with that. Got Molly Ternking.
So in response to Counselor Wiltz's comment, um, I think it's possible to facilitate a, like, in essence, a panel discussion where stakeholders would come in to the three-person committee or however big it is, and you can have that back and forth discussion with vested stakeholders. Um, I, I think it's just a matter of figuring out how we want to set up the room, how, who facilitates those meetings, but I think it's possible to have that back and forth discussion and not just have, i- in my head, I'm separating the two from like a panel discussion being a back and forth conversation and a listening session just being where the public come in and comes in and provides information or comment. But I think that we could make a panel discussion work.
I guess I would want to be sure that there were people, um, that everyone in the room, if you, you, you know, has an equal footing on discussion, um, within reason, of course. Um, so when I hear panel discussion, I hear a select few individuals who are experts providing their commentary. And maybe that's just my bias, and I'm not, that's not the definition that you have, but, um, I'm encouraged, because I do, I, I, I would like to have these meetings be, um, more open and, um, put the public at the table, essentially.
I think that's doable. I mean, we've discussed, I think you could set the room up in an open circle, and, and then, you know, the the committee members be a part of that circle, and then whoever wants to join in and be a part of that discussion can. Um, it'll just be a matter of having someone, I think, a good facilitator would help those discussions move forward.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Hawk.
Would it not be possible, and perhaps better, to say who the members are of the council? But if you advertise it for an open meeting, so that all the council could go, if we chose, or listen to it online, if we chose, then, uh, nobody would feel left out of the conversation. We'd all feel like we had the opportunity to stay up to date with it. Uh, and that, I believe, the way we do PAC because there's three members of PAC, but it is a a notice meeting, or at least it was supposed to be. I suppose it still is. So all members could show up at that meeting because it's a notice meeting. And that might alleviate some of the concerns about it. Does that help at all, do you think, President Wiltz?
Yeah, I think that's exactly what we would want. Um, what I was envisioning is that, that's exactly what would happen for the every other week, large meetings, and in And in between those meetings, um, the smaller committee needs to be doing some work and, um, gathering information because although I think we can have open discussions in public meetings, I think sometimes we need to go to people where they are to get, um, really good information. And of course, those are going to be, um, a little, that's going to be a little bit more difficult, which is why I was suggesting some increased, uh, staff support. And, uh, mentioned the fact that we wouldn't be able to be doing that work together unless we had other public meetings, just so we could be having conversations and planning. Because we would be a quorum.
Yeah, I've got Counselor Iverson, and then we'll go to McKim.
Yeah, I, I wanted to come back to this idea. Well, first of all, let me just say, I'm hearing a lot of agreement. I'm hearing a lot of encouragement from the public. Um, Madam Commissioner, I'm very glad to hear that, hear your comments. Um, and, and so I, I wanted to get back to this idea of the, the, what comprises the committee. And in a, in a previous iteration, we had talked about a 15-member body. And I wanted to read out those 15 members to make sure that I'm hearing that, uh, that, that what the will of the council is, is correct. And that is a person with lived experience who is incarcerated in the Monroe County Jail, a criminal judge, a civil judge, a prosecutor, a public defender, a representative. These are representatives from those offices, so it doesn't have to be the elected official. It can, it can be a representative. A representative from the Sheriff's Department, a representative from a, a community behavioral health center like Centerstone, uh, a representative from, uh, the Bloomington Police Department, uh, a representative, uh, that knows harm reduction from our Health Department, three county council members, a member, a, a current member of the Monroe County Commissioners, a, uh, representative from the City of Bloomington Family Resources Department or their designee, and a member of the Bloomington Common Council. And then we would also make, want to make sure that DLZ and other interested vested bodies are invited as well. That's a 15-member panel. How do we feel about that? As opposed to just three council members?
We'll open it up for some comments. Counselor McKim?
Well, I mean, I think I, I already addressed that, that specific, uh, issue and that I am concerned about eliminating the, the actual na- those named seats. But on the other hand, yeah, the logistics of, of getting quorum for a 15-member body, especially with, with such diverse positions is, would be a challenge. So, you know, I, I think as long as, as this body does, it, it does a good job of outreach and encouraging people to come and, and gives them a seat at the table, makes them feel heard, then I think that's, I, I, I think that's probably the best, the best path forward. And, and to address some of the, the, you know, Counselor Wiltz's comments about, uh, uh, about listening sessions and going to where people are, I think that's, that's a great idea. And I think having listening sessions out in the field, um, i- is, is really important. We did that back when we did, uh, the food and beverage tax. And it was, I, I, I thought it was a great experience. I mean, we had meetings in Smithville and in Ellisville. And, you know, all, all over, we, we met members of the community to hear their, their concerns and, uh, had, had, you know, had a dialogue with them. It wasn't just having them come up to a lectern and give their three minutes and leave. I think we've, I felt like we, we heard their comments. There was some give and take. And I thought that was a really positive experience, even though, you know, some of the people were not very happy about the food and beverage tax. But it was still the overall process I thought worked really well. And so I think if something like that, in addition to the regular meetings of the body, I think would be really bu- really valuable.
Counsel, will you go respond?
Uh, I, I, I want to respond, but I, I, I think, um, what I'm hearing is, is pretty clear. And so I'd like to offer a, a motion, um, and, uh, and, and that would be, I would like to move to replace the language in section one, where it says, J-VAC will consist of three council members to those 15 aforementioned bodies uh, that I read just, just briefly ago.
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second.
And it needs to be, I can post those on the screen or read them again.
Why don't you read those again and, um, then we'll open it up for council comments.
Those 15 members, uh, we are proposing with this amendment would be a person with lived experience incarcerated in the Monroe County Jail, a criminal judge, a civil judge, a representative from the Prosecutor's Department, a representative from the Public Defender's Department, a representative from the Sheriff's Department, a representative from a community behavioral health center like Centerstone, a member from the Bloomington Police Department, a representative, a representative from the Monroe County Health Department, three county council members, a Monroe County Commissioner, a representative from the City of Bloomington's Family Resources Department, and a member of the Bloomington City Council.
We will open this motion and amendment, uh, or this amendment up for discussion.
I have a question.
Counselor Hawk.
Okay. Are you saying this entire group's going to bring the county council budget to tell us how to vote?
No, ma'am.
That's ridiculous.
No, ma'am. Uh, the, the, the way that the, the ordinance is written, the resolution is written, is that they're going to bring recommendations to the council. Nobody has the authority in Indiana statute to make the decisions that this body has. So we, they are bringing us recommendations and this body has the opportunity to say, that's a great idea, or that's a terrible idea. That's up to us. And, and what I would like, so I'll just leave it there.
Okay. Other comments? Counselor Crossley?
I was just going to say, uh, again, to reiterate and going back and listening to Counsel Iverson say, all of the folks that would be considered a part of this committee, majority of these people were on the Criminal Justice Response Committee in the first place. So I don't think that we would have an issue with getting quorum. And of, of course, I do think that we should definitely highly encourage, um, those or their representatives to make sure that they are a part of that, um, as well. So I, I, I definitely think that, and, and also in going to people where they are, um, I've done that myself in terms of trying to talk to people outside of what we hear, the Stride Center and Centerstone. And I've talked to, um, the folks from Courage to Change Sober Living. Marilyn Grimes, actually, I met with her and talked to her and, and been getting responses of people and trying to figure out what is it that we should be doing, just as a general opinion. Ultimately, we know that we have the final say, but of course, just because we have the final say doesn't necessarily mean that we can't consider opinions and consider public comment as well. So again, definitely thinking that those with lived experience should be a part of that. I think we cannot do that without them. And again, we have to have our focus of what it is that we need to do. We already know we need to do, we just need to go ahead and do that now. So that's all I'd say about that.
Counselor McKim?
I guess I am a little maybe confused or surprised at that motion. Um, just because it seemed like the tenor of the discussion had been to affirm the la- the simplification that was in front of us. So I'm just, I'm, I'm.
That's interesting.
Why did you offer that motion?
Because I heard exactly the opposite. I heard that the tenor of the conversation was to be more representative and have a larger body. And I, I heard that there were going to be issues with quorum and, and certainly, you know, that was going to be an issue, but we could work through that. And so that was the spirit in which I made that, that motion is, it seems, uh, that, uh, that's the direction council was heading. I mean, I, so I, you know, maybe I misheard, but I, that, that is certainly the, the direction I heard, but there is a motion on the floor.
Okay. Other, Counselor Wiltz, please.
With respect to this motion, um, well, am I, yeah, with respect to this motion, I, I'm a little, see, I'm arguing both sides. I'm a little hesitant about the larger body being designated as a committee. Um, because I, I feel like that's limiting in that, um, we've chosen voices that we want to hear. There might be others with equally valid, um, experience that we don't have on that list. And I'm wondering if, if, you know, how we, I almost feel like it'd be easier to navigate a more inclusive conversation if we say, here we are, a tiny body of three, and we want to hear from everybody and we are specifically reaching out and encouraging people on that list to come, talk to us, participate, attend. But everyone's on sort of an equal footing, rather than some of those voices are on the committee and some aren't. And I think there might be some, I don't know. I think it could get problematic when we said we want one community mental health, um, center representative, which is obviously going to be Centerstone in our community. But we don't necessarily then have a spit, a spot for, um, another mental health provider. That's all I'm saying.
Let, let me ask this question to the, the group. I'm sorry. And I'll jump over you. What if we were to retain the original three composition in their original motion? And we were to designate the additional names that Counselor Iverson's motion has with ex officio status? Meaning that these are members of the community with, eh, ex officio talks about a status of one's position. Um, they would be people who add significance to the conversation, are noted for that significance to the conversation. But for the mechanics of the movement of the body, if, or if they said, if a member of the body said, I don't want you to come. I don't believe the majority would have that position, but there might be one or two that say, look, we don't want to send someone this week or whatever. But that would note the position, the experience, they could con- contribute to that conversation. But again, the mechanics might be preserved. And again, with that many people as ex officio or full-time, whichever way this motion goes, I would almost think that you will need the facilitation discussion that Counselor Wiltz was talking about earlier. I'll throw that out. Counselor Munson?
You absolutely covered what I was going to cover, uh, by saying an alternative would be to, uh, list these important, uh, parties that we need to hear from on a regular basis. But I didn't have the idea of ex officio, but I think that's a good concept. I was just going to make sure that these were enumerated, but say, including but not limited to blah, 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 blah. And make that, uh, part of, uh, section C, a new paragraph under section C.
All right. Other comments? Counselor McKip?
I don't have any problem with the, the approach that Counselor Munson and actually, um, uh, Mr. Deckard, that you also, uh, suggested. As long as it were clear that that doesn't, uh, uh, count towards the quorum or isn't required for a quorum. Uh, it looks like Ms. Turner King may have a comment on that.
Do you have a comment?
Oh, did I? I'm sorry.
It's okay. I had two different people asking me questions. I do not think ex officio would count towards quorum. Um, there are a few considering points that it was like to maybe point out, um, when you're considering adding these 15 people. And one of them is, um, with the addition of DLZ, I think that would involve perhaps, um, I think that goes into their contract negotiations. I don't think their contract has been written yet. And so if we want them to be, uh, participating in this committee, I would suggest a conversation with the commissioners as they're considering drafting that contract.
Thank you, Ms. Turner King. I see Counsel Wiltz.
I just wanted to, um, say, uh, Counselor Deckard and Counsel Munson, I think that's brilliant. I, I like that approach, um, quite a bit.
Other comments? So the underlying, the table, not table, pardon me, the amendment we have is for the current, uh, addition of the 15 names is read by, or the names is read by Counselor Iverson. We can just, we can do whatever here. Do we want to vote on this motion? Or are we allowed to further amend the motion?
Vote on the amendment first.
Yeah, Counsel Munson.
Or you can withdraw the motion and, uh, offer a new motion.
I, I kind of feel like the, the, the motion's already been, been debated. We, we need to vote on it.
Okay.
And then somebody could offer, if it fails, or even if it succeeds, you could offer
All right.
another amendment.
Okay. All right. So let's do a roll call on the, uh, motion to amend.
This is to add all these people to.
Okay, so to clarify what we are voting on, the motion is to replace the language in section one of the three members to a 15-member panel.
Right.
Counselor McKim.
No.
Counselor Deckard.
No.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
I don't know if that's what everybody wants. I, I don't know. It's just going to end up another mess like we've already had, folks. If that's what you want to do, I'll go along with it.
I, I need to know what you want to vote.
I, I don't know. Pass. That's what they do in the city.
Counselor Wiltz?
No.
Counselor Munson?
No.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion fails.
All right. Do we have another amendment that could be offered on the resolution?
So it answers, yes, there is, and that, that could be offered.
Yeah, there, uh, the chair would entertain a amendment. The chair will offer an amendment. You can do with it what you all will. That we designate under section C, the following ex officio members of the committee. One person with lived experience incarcerated in Monroe County Jail, one criminal judge, one civil judge, one prosecutor, one, the public defender, one sheriff, one C-A, CBHC Centerstone Representative, one BPD, one harm reduction specialist from the Monroe County Health Department, one Monroe County Commissioner, pardon me. One representative of the City of Bloomington Family Resource Department or designee, one member of Bloomington Common Council, one DLZ, non-voting member.
Okay. Second.
I'll second.
All right. So there's a
So who's seconded?
A motion is second on that as entertained by the chair and second. Comments or discussion on that amendment as offered? Counselor McKip?
Only that, um, my understanding is that an ex officio member has no obligations towards the, um, the, the, towards the quorum and towards the committee. And so this wouldn't put any obligation on DLZ, for example. I mean, if they choose to participate, they'd be useful in the conversation, but we're not adding to the terms. I mean, my understanding is that we would not be adding to, you know, eh, any requirements under their contract.
Other comments?
You know, after you've had a couple of meetings, you may decide, well, you need more people on there or less, or somebody might come forward just, just to speak and say, we have an idea. Why does it have to be this complicated?
Oh, tough issue. Counselor Crossley?
Um, I was going to say, um, I think that this is a healthy compromise. Obviously, I wanted, um, something else. But again, we are all working together and I appreciate this amendment. And I definitely think that this is a healthy compromise, um, as well. And again, if we, I, I'm definitely not looking at this to fail, uh, going in. Cause if we have a mindset already, then we're, we're doomed, even before we make the vote official or whatever we decide on today. So I definitely think that, um, you know, again, we have to have the mindset of what it is that we need to do from a fiscal standpoint, and we will go in and do it. And if, you know, things happen as we are going through this, then I do think that we can all And if, you know, things happen as we are going through this, then I do think that we can always come back and revisit and come back to the drawing board. As Counselor Hawke suggested, uh, don't, don't, I definitely don't think that's a bad idea. Um, but again, this seems to be much of a healthy compromise as well. And of course, we know that we have to communicate with our commissioners. Obviously we know that, you know, we own, we know what lane they're in and we also know what lane that we are in. But I definitely think that we can all intersect together as we are figuring out all of this at the same time. I said, but of course, you know, and I welcome and, you know, all the things considering with commissioners as well. So we, we can do this together. It's not like we have this idea of, you know, putting ourselves in one area and putting them in another area. We are trying to make sure that we are all doing this collaboratively and doing this together.
Thank you, Counselor.
We have a motion.
We got a mo-, uh, an amendment in a second. Any other thing else? All right. Uh, a roll call on the amendment, please.
Okay. Just so that I understand what the amendment is. That that we go with the three member um, committee and that there are the 15 mentioned ex officios that are not part of the quorum. Right?
I think it would be 12 because within that 15 listed are three council members.
Sorry. Yeah, that would be 12. So. Okay. So, okay. Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke. Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Staff management.
And now we are at, we have a lot of business tonight. So I'm gonna try to keep us, but we, underlying resolution.
I would like to make one comment because we've had like two motions within this resolution. Um, we need to update this resolution. So I will bring it back for your signatures at a later time. Unless you want me to just use your electronic signatures.
I think we can sign it at a later time.
Thank you.
I think Counselor Munson.
I know you're anxious to wrap up, but I have an amendment I would like to offer. And it has to do with the larger purpose of what we're talking about. And this, it, I would like to, uh, add two additional objectives to part D. And insert these before, um, line one. These are what revenue sources, for example, bonds, special purpose taxes, et cetera. And funding levels are available to construct a new jail, including land purchase. And the second one is what revenue sources and funding levels are available on an annual basis to support the operations of the new jail.
Second. Thank you for being in there. I'm the second.
And I think this is our overall focus. And I don't want, it doesn't supply what follows it. It just is a partner to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor Munson. Counselor Wiltz for the comment.
Yeah, I I'm wondering, um, about, I like, I, I like that, um, those additions. How is it different than number, or D five?
Okay. I see that it differs from D five in that five is referring to one, two, three, and four.
Oh.
Okay. Rather than specifically construction of new jail and land purchase and also annual operations of the new jail.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Turner King.
If, if I may offer an alternative suggestion, instead of adding two additional objectives, what if you amend five to say what funding sources are available to implement investments on all intercepts for a new jail and operational cost?
Or or could you not just put, or any other additional revenue that might be considered or something? And I, and my question was, I, did I hear you say special purpose income tax?
I, I said, for example, bonds, special purpose taxes, et cetera.
But this, okay.
And those are just for example.
Right. And that, because that was something I mentioned the other day. That we might be able to tap some of that, whatever. When you get ready to really start talking about the budget parts, I would really then be a part of that.
Absolutely. I, I just think it's important to put the construction of a new jail and the annual operating costs as a major component of what we need to focus on in terms of funding.
Yes, that's our job.
Thank you. Counselor McKim.
Well, I, I was gonna say, I, I do like, uh, Ms. Turner King's, uh, rephrasing, but you know, I'm also just fine with the, I, I kind of feel like we have to move on and, and I'm fine with the amendment as presented. I, I think either, either or, I, I do like the idea of, of mention of the jail. That's important. Um, and, and other revenue sources. So I'm.
Let's, uh, move to a roll call on the underlying amendment or the over whatever, the amendment.
First, who seconded Cheryl's motion? Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Counselor Munson, if you could email me those.
Absolutely.
Because I didn't catch it all. Oh. Before I say roll call.
Okay.
Molly Turner King is going to share her screen.
Okay.
How's that?
So I would like to make a comment that we are, uh, making changes in a resolution that has been very carefully worded and I wonder how it would affect our timeline if we took tonight's amendments and polished them a bit and brought them back to our work session. That's a two week delay. And I don't, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. I just want you all to, uh, feel comfortable with the wording. I want all of us to feel comfortable with the wording. So I just throw that out there for a question to you all.
Counselor McKim. I don't support a delay in the overall implementation of this process. I mean, I, I'm perfectly happy voting yes on this amendment. And then if another amendment tweak the language comes back in two weeks, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Counselor Munson, does the text highlighted in yellow capture what you would have liked to have included?
Hang on.
Yes, let me edit, please. Uh, for example, special purpose taxes. Get rid of the S and the comma. Add the word bonds. And then the, the rest is fine. And funding levels to construct a new jail. Including land purchase. That's good for that one. And what revenue source? Yes, very good on seven. I wanted to move these actually to, as items one and two. Because I think these proceed. These are foundational to everything else that follows.
So as reflected on the screen, one and two?
That looks great. Very good.
Counsel, take a look at this, the highlighted, that is your amended motion before you. If there are no comments on it, we will ask for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we will go to a roll call.
All right. I'm running out of room to do votes. So, so hold on.
We still got a few.
Yeah.
Okay. So I am ready. So this is for amendment number three. Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay. Counselor Iverson.
Counsel, I move to adopt resolution 2023 dash zero nine, a resolution establishing the Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee.
Well, it's a free.
It's already on the floor, isn't it?
What are you saying?
Where we get to the adoption stage, I did want you to point out that I added under, it's really big on the screen. Sorry. Subsection C, um, the sentence that says, one representative from each of the following stakeholders will serve as an ex officio member on the JFAK. And then there's your 12 designated.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Turner.
So I, I have been corrected. I move to call the question.
Okay, there's a, a move to call the question. I think that just takes us to public comment on the underlying overall resolution. Seeing no public comment, we will now go to roll call.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Did I miss somebody? Sorry. Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel. Thank you very much, everyone. Let's move back in the agenda, back to item 16 Sheriff's Office. And I believe Bree Gregory will speak to it after we get a motion from Counselor Iverson.
Counsel, I move to approve the sheriff's request for the creation of a new account line in Fund 8143 dash zero 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 zero, 2016 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Account Line 23901. Deputy equipment and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $5,324.80 in the supplies category.
Second.
Okay.
Good evening, Counsel. Um, this, um, extra funding was found as we, as my office has been working to address stagnant funds. So, um, we reached out to the sheriff's department, um, kind of relieved that they had just funding sitting around. They actually were able to get permission from the granting agency to expend. So this is just a housekeeping item. We're asking you to appropriate so they can use it appropriately.
Yeah. Okay. Questions, comments from counselors. Counselor.
Just, uh, I'm glad that you did that. I also, uh, reached out today to try to get some information. When you're looking at the jail bookings and you look at, uh, the population count, there are several in there that says, uh, hope for DOC. Or it says, uh, P hold, I think on it. So I'm wondering if that's for, uh, if they're on parole. I, I don't really know what all of those mean. However, uh, we do get paid for some of that. Now I know that, um, there's a dollar amount, the Audit Your Office, uh, sent me information that the state sends us something having to do with our level six, uh, felons that we keep. However, there are some of those people that have been in there, this Department of Correction, that's it had maximum security. So that's not a level six. And they've been there for months and months and months. So our DOC is supposed to be paying us for every day that they are there. And, and we should be billing that out. Money should be coming in. Now it used to be like 30 some dollars a day. Plus they had to pay for any medical. Now that was a long time ago when I remembered it was 30 some dollars a day. So I don't know what it is now. But what I was trying to get, uh, from the sheriff's office, I made a contact today and I'll, I'll follow up as well. Is that being billed out? Because, you know, I don't, not certain who does that there or who's keeping track of it. But why are we holding so many people from Department of Corrections? And is that making us feel like that we are overcrowded because we are assisting the state? And I may be looking at this all wrong, but when you look at things and you have questions, you see something, you better ask the question. So, and since that's what we're talking about, the additional funds. Uh, if maybe there's more additional funds coming in, uh, as well.
It's a good point. Ca-, uh, Counselor Hawke, Bree.
Yeah. So I have, um, we, obviously we do get the felony level six reimbursements and the misdemeanor reimbursements. And I have reached out to the sheriff's department for further information on how exactly that works. And as soon as I, um, receive a response, um, I will forward that on and explain further.
Sure. I, I wanted to make a quick comment, just as a sort of a different trajectory. I think the same vein and spirit. It's Counselor Hawke. Um, I would encourage all department heads, all our county folks to take a look at any of these grants, any of these dollars for which the date on them has a little bit of age and significance. There's nothing that will kill federal and state grants quicker than grants that have some age and are not dispensed. And these are vital dollars we want to protect. So let's, um, just kind of be mindful of that. Funds that are sitting not doing or, or what have you. All right. Any other comment? Uh, Auditor Smith.
Uh, yes, I wanted to say that, uh, when we established the internal auditor's position, a lot of people questioned that. And when we talked about how important that need was, this is an example of how that need has saved pots of money, just different places where we've scooped things out, been able to look at it really closely and see that we missed a piece of the pie. Somebody somewhere missed a piece of pie, putting that together, that position really more than pays for itself.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Let's go do a roll call on this. Oh, wait, wait, hold on. Public comment. Let's, let's hear from the public. They've helped us a lot tonight. That's true. Seeing no public comment, let's do a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right. Item 17 is the Auditor's Department.
For section A, Counsel, I would like to move the auditor's request to create new account lines in Fund 111216 dash zero 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 zero. Simultaneously approved additional appropriations, the amount of $58,488.13 in the personnel category. And amend the 2023 salary ordinance to add account line 10045 GIS Customer Service Representative, 40 hours, PATB, non-exempt.
Second.
Right.
Hey, hello again. Um, we talked to you briefly about this, uh, um, last month. So you're, um, you are aware that the plat fund where this is, has been budgeted originally, is not able to sustain this position at this time. So what we're requesting is that, um, you appropriate, um, the necessary lines and the auditors and eligible fund. And then whenever possible, if, um, the plat fund is able to, um, to, to assist with this, we're going to use that first. So we're asking just to kind of not deappropriate, leave that alone and appropriate this fund as well.
All right. Comments, questions from counts?
We heard about this last, last meeting.
All right. Public comment. Seeing none, roll call vote if we could, Michelle.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke is not present. Motion passed six, zero.
All right. Thank you. We now move to 17B.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for a fund to fund transfer of cash from Fund 4611, the 2018 GO bond debt in the amount of $100,902.98, Fund 4612, 2019 GO bond debt in the amount of $76,823.06. Fund 4613, 2020 GO bond debt in the amount of $98,526.38. And 4614, the 2021 GO bond debt in the amount of $60,663.95 to Fund 4615, the 2022 GO bond debt. to Fund four six one five, the twenty twenty-two Geo bond debt for a total of three hundred thirty-six thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Second.
All right, we've got the motion, the second. Ca- uh, go ahead, sorry.
It's me again. Um, this was also found as we were, um, cleaning up stagnant funds. So the these debt funds, um, the step fund amounts can only be used for levy debt payments. So to, um, correct this issue, um, I'm asking a fund to fund transfer occur, um, to consolidate, to put all of this, um, cash into one fund. And then moving forward, we will have one, um, Geo bond debt fund that will carry forward. And then the L G F can consider that when they're adopting a rate.
Thank you. Comments or questions from counsel, counsel Ivers?
Just real quick, thank you for that note that had gone to D L G O and, and say word of accounts. That relationship that we have with them is so important and we saw that in the audit. So that's, that's a great note to read. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Seeing no other comments, we'll go to a public comment. Seeing no public comment, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous, six zero.
All right, that takes us to item C with the Auditor's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the creation of a new account line in Fund one zero 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 dash zero 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 two, general fund auditor, and to simultaneously amend the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance by adding account line one six eight zero zero. Uh, trans- uh, transitional temporary training position, forty hours, Pat B, non-exempt.
Second.
Okay, so we, um, my office is very fortunate to have, um, to be able to transfer, um, someone already on staff to the accounts payable position. So, um, training is actually already occurring. So I'm actually asking that you approve retroactively so we can compensate her for this week as well appropriately.
All right.
So this will just allow both, um, employees that are currently training and or working to be paid at the correct rate.
Okay.
Questions?
And I would like to add, I would like to add that we have had the same accounts payable person for many years, and she's been absolutely amazing. Um, um, her name is Amy Lightler, and she, um, is going to be the new payroll person. Uh, but I want to let you guys know that in all the years she has done this, there has been so very few, I mean, almost zero issues. She has been absolutely amazing. So I wanted you guys to hear that. Uh, it, that's part of, one of the reasons we have great audits is because we do great accounting, and she is a large part of that. And I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions from counsel? Seeing none, let's hear from the, uh, Counselor Wiltz.
Sorry, um, I do have a question because this, this item, um, just confuses me a little bit. And because we, we established the idea of this, uh, training line for when two people would be occupying the same job uh, as an overlap. And specifically with jobs that were pretty high up and specialized where there would be that need for, you know, uh, uh, in a training and adjustment period for someone to kind of get used to what, everything that was going on. I guess I just want to, um, I just don't understand exactly how this fits with that model. Because you have so, you have someone in your department already. They're not both doing the same job right now. So how is this actually m- m- fulfilling that same purpose for which we, the staff, you know, kind of put, have done this in the past?
So currently, um, the Carly Woodruff, the person that is moving into the accounts payable position, she has she's training, but she's hands on. She's actually performing those duties at this time. Um, and she's classified currently as the Assistant Financial Director as a Pat A. So she's currently training and performing the work of a Pat B. So we feel it's only fair to pay her at the elevated rates, um, while she is training and perform, and doing the higher level work. So, which is why I'm here to request that.
Okay, so is anyone doing her job? Or her old job?
No, she, okay, so first of all, accounts payable is, is due every, every week. It's a very high-paced, uh, high-speed process. So to get her, to get her up to speed so that she could take it over, so that person go to payroll and do the same thing. We had to get her on that while, while Amy was still in-house. The difference is now you're asking her to do a Pat B job when she's a Pat A. So we're only asking for the differential. We're not asking for all new money, just that small differential. But yeah, she's entering the claims now.
Other comments, questions? Seeing none, we will, um, go to public comment on this. Seeing no public comment, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous, six zero.
All right. That takes us to item number eighteen, the Sophia Travis Grants Committee, our happy committee. And Counselor Munson, I believe, but first we have a motion.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve, extending the Sophia Travis Grants agreements for the Bloomington Project School and Girls Incorporated of Monroe County.
Second.
Counsel Munson.
Very quickly, uh, both organizations, uh, needed, uh, to have changes in their, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-two, uh, funded grant programs. And because we have a contractual arrangement with them, uh, these, uh, any changes must be approved by the council. And, uh, the Grants Committee met, reviewed the changes, and recommends that the council approves them.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Munson. Any questions or comments from counsel? Seeing none, we will open it up to public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed six zero unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. This takes us to item number nineteen, a request from the County Council.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven, an interlocal agreement between Monroe County and the city of Bloomington to establish a joint human rights commission.
Second.
All right, I believe we got Ms. Molly Turner King to speak.
So what is before you for consideration is approval of an interlocal that establishes a joint human rights commission um, by state statute, uh, the fiscal body. For each party of the political subdivisions in the interlocal has to approve the interlocal, and if not, the Attorney General does. Um, it's much easier to get you guys to prove it logistically. Um, so what the res- interlocal does is it establishes a joint human rights commission with the city. Um, the reasons that brought forth this change was that individuals' humans' rights are the same whether you live in the city, the county, wherever. Um, it was designed to, uh, help encourage public outreach or provide more opportunity for such. It helps eliminate confusion for citizens. I'm the attorney who helps serve the Human Rights Commission, and I don't know how many times someone has made a complaint to either me or the city. And we have said, you're talking to the wrong person, vice versa. So it eliminates on that confusion. Um, the couns- or the county is committing to, uh, fund fifty percent or half of the seventy percent of the salaries, the staff dedicated to the H R C. And we can reevaluate that cost annually for this year. Um, during the budget, we already appropriated the thirty-five thousand dollar commitment in the commissioner's budget.
Thank you very much. Questions and comments from counselors? Counselor McKim.
Only that I think this is a, a fantastic, uh, opportunity for collaboration with the city and, uh, I, I enthusiastically support this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Iverson.
In, in the last election, the primary, we're over and over again, you know, how are the city and the county working together? This is one way.
My dad to that, all the people that said they would work together, well, now you're going to have to do it and we're gonna have to do it too. This is a good example, and we just got to do everything else a little bit like this, and we might be okay. No other comments, we will go to the comments of the public. Seeing no public comment, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
We saw that.
Counselor Crossley.
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you. That takes us to item B, and this is a, uh, discussion, review, and consideration of, of a Resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten on comp time.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten, establishing procedures for payments of comp, compensatory time.
Second.
Right, and speak on Molly Turner.
The resolution before you, um, came about because recently the council office and human resources offices have been handling requests for payout for, for employ- the payout for comp time of employees who are transferring from one county department to the other. And in dealing with those requests, we reviewed the comp time policy and wanted to update the policy to reflect, um, more efficient payment. Um, as written right now, the, what happens in essence is that these payments come from the council budget, which requires an additional appropriation. And so the change in this, um, resolution reflects that payments would come from department budgets, which would then allow the department just to come in and ask for the creation of a comp time payout line and would eliminate the need for the additional appropriation, thus facilitating a quicker payment to the employee. And then the other amendments to the resolution, um, adds language to reflect the personnel policy and to clearly state that comp time is not transferable between one department and another.
Thank you, Ms. Turner King. Questions, comments from the counsel? Counsel McKim.
I, I don't have a problem with this. Uh, I, you know, in, in general, I still think we want to encourage comp time to be used as quickly as possible after it is accrued. It is not meant to be a way to get addition ex- extra money. Uh, it is meant to provide departments with an opportunity to kind of level off spikes in, in demand uh, for services, but not, not as a way to get a bonus or a, or a backdoor raise. So yeah, i- in the interest of efficiency, I, I support this, but I think we want to make sure that comp time is used as, as quickly as possible after it's accrued.
Yeah.
And I think those sentiments are reflected in the resolution and the personnel policy.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I do, I, I, I'd like to just add to this briefly to say, and I hope for county employees listening to this. Uh, I know that a lot of employers, a lot of organizations, and probably including us to a great extent, we talk a lot about make sure your work-life balance as well. And then we come in the next day and, and send nine million things out that stress you and everybody else does and all that. And, uh, I know that people are sending contradictory messages on that. As a son of a county employee, I hope everybody is taking time as they can, and I hope every one of our departments is managing that as best they can amidst the demands of running public service, which never stops. So I, I always like to note that because there's a lot of messaging out there about well-being and take your time, and then there's a lot of headaches that accompany those messages. So just everyone be mindful that as we kind of struggle towards the door together. Any other comments from counsel? Let's ask the public if they have any comments. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yeah.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you. Next, we're at item twenty, approval of summary minutes as presented.
Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes of April the eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the regular session and April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three work session as presented.
Second.
Got a motion of second. Any comments on the minutes? Counselor Crossley?
I should have sent an email about this and I'd, um, I thought I hit send, but you know, it's a day. Um, April eleventh, um, there's just a minor correction under counsel comments where it says Crossley is a member of Kappa Tri. It should be Kappa Ta. So that was the only correction that I saw. That is.
What, what was it again? I'm sorry.
Um, it says Kappa Tri Omega, and it said, it should be Kappa Ta Omega.
T A U.
Yes.
All right, I will make that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, uh, any comments from the public on these minutes? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you. That now takes us to counsel comments. Looking to my left, I've got Counselor Iverson.
This is gonna be super brief. I said publicly that I was gonna raise more money than Trent Deckard to support Beacon Inc. And I am eating my words tonight. Congratulations, Trent, for raising over two thousand dollars in private funds to support those experiencing homelessness. I barely cleared five hundred. So, uh,
You did it well, sir. Thank you, Counselor Iverson. Any other comments?
I like that competition.
Counselor McKim.
This is just, uh, on a personal note. Uh, I think everybody knows that I lost my mom a couple of weeks ago, just a year after I lost my dad. And I just really appreciate all the kindness that all of you, my colleagues on the council and the council office, everybody has, uh, shown me. I really appreciate the plant that, uh, that you sent. And, uh, yeah, all of your words and support really means a lot to me.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. We sure think a lot of you and your family. Uh, anyone else? I have one final comment. We did a lot of work, and you did it with me in the chair and our esteemed president. So I appreciate your patience on all that. Um, for all those that had to be up a little bit later and stay a little bit later tonight, thank you for doing that. We appreciate you. Um, this is important work. Uh, we all say we have a lot of things we want to do, we want to work together. Tonight was a good example of that. So with that, anything else?
Thank you, T S D.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting is now adjourned.
Yeah, I have a few more that's coming around.
More aside.
Yes, there was so much. I'm so sorry.